This open meeting of the Grafton zoning board of appeals is being conducted both remotely and in person, consistent with the temporary provisions of the open meeting law, which extends remote meeting protocols through March 31st, 2025. This meeting is convened by Zoom video conference and in-person, as posted on the meeting agenda, which can be found on the Town of Grafton website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. Please don't be aware that, or please be aware that other people may be able to see you, your screen, and screen share, your computer may be recorded and viewable later. This meeting may feature public comment. If you're attending remotely, use the raise hand feature within Zoom, and the meeting administrator will enable you to speak when you're recognized. If anyone is exclusively on the phone, the meeting administrator will enable you to speak. Anyone in person will ask you to step up to the podium, and anyone that speaks, please state your name and address prior to your comments. And each vote taken in this meeting will be done by a roll call vote. So at this time, I'll turn the meeting over to Vice Chair Bill McCusker.
Okay, thank you. So at this point, we're reopening case number 892-59 Pleasant Street. I guess I'll go straight to the applicant. Do you have new, anything new that we want to present? Or I assume you do, and I know we got new waiver requests?
Yep, that's correct. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair Steve O'Connell from Turning Point Engineering. So since the last meeting, well, at the last meeting, we went through the waiver requests that had been submitted, and part of our discussion, you know, had occurred that we were probably missing some subdivision regulation-related waivers. So we've since incorporated those, have circulated them. So I think it would be prudent to just continue the discussion and review those, just to ensure that there would be no potential plan changes as a result of those waiver requests. I don't believe there will be, but we should, not my decision. Then, as you're aware, Attorney Hill circulated a draft decision, which we had a little bit of hand in and some input, so I feel like we're a little bit involved already, which is helpful, just, you don't need you folks to get caught up, but being a familiar format, it shouldn't be too difficult for you. And then the third item of business that we did submit, as at the request of some folks at the last meeting, was a, I think what was requested was more of a section of the building, but we thought this bird's eye view of the building would really kind of tell the full story. So the way I see it, high-level view of these, those three topics, unless someone else has more to add. But no, no, no substantial or substantive plan, project, site-related information to share, or, you know, changes that have been made.
We have the underground recharge systems.
Thank you, thank you, we do, we do have the underground recharge systems. That was requested by Mr. Yeomans at the last meeting from some detailed discussions. We had prepared that information, submitted it to Jeff Walsh, with the expectation that we'd get some technical review first. Jeff, on his own accord, you know, as part of his review, just informed the board that his review, he was satisfied with his review. There was a reply to that email, which I think is appropriate to discuss more in an open meeting, and we can do that whenever, whenever you'd like, but thanks for reminding me, Dan.
Um, why don't we get into that right now? So, you know, I think this is, Bill, you had some commentary about the recharge, and we don't have Jeff's written comments in front of us right now, but I, I think those went to everybody?
Yep.
So I think most of us have seen them, but, you know, I think the issue is, right now, that you proposed some recharge for a couple of the buildings.
Yep, correct.
Two out of the four buildings.
Yep, so I can give you a brief overview. So the roof rain, the rain that fell on the roofs of those two, two buildings in the out front, was collected and piped directly into the drainage collection system. When you do that with, you know, roof water is clean water, when you do that with clean water, you're, you're mixing it with untreated water. So if you can go directly to a recharge, independent recharge system, then you're recharging clean water directly into the ground, and in this case, soil conditions that are very conducive to that infiltration. So those two buildings out front were, were perfect, it was ideal to set that up that way. The, the two buildings out back, because of their proximity to the stormwater basins, those were already being directly piped to the stormwater basin, so clean roof runoff was being piped directly to the stormwater basins. Treated stormwater through the collection system was being treated prior to introduction into the stormwater basin, so it's already recharge occurring, except that recharge is occurring in the basin, in the stormwater basins themselves, within close proximity to those rear two buildings. That's why you only saw specific recharge chamber systems for the first, the two buildings out front. So that's the explanation that I know Jeff wanted to give, but wanted to be careful in his reply.
Yep.
Sure. So can you just give a quick overview, like where, relative to the building, do those recharge systems?
Do you have a diagram on it?
Are buried.
So we actually didn't bring that plan, but it's pretty simple, I can do here. I don't know if I can get the mic. So the recharge system, so there'll be an underground collection, which is very common in even single-family homes, there's a, a system that either collects the footing drains for groundwater or downspouts from gutters. That'll run along both sides of the building, it comes into an underground, there's, there's ample room here because of the space, the green space between the building and the sidewalk, so there's underground room here, and then that is encouraged to infiltrate directly into the ground. There is an overflow component, as is, you know, good engineering practice, the overflow component does connect to the drainage system, so in an overflow situation, you get more than the two-inch storm that it was designed for, which was what Jeff had asked us to design it for, because that, that's the most, one of the most frequent rainfall, so if you can infiltrate the most frequent rainfall, then you're really doing a good job with infiltration. So on this building, it's here, it connects directly to the drainage system in the overflow condition, and then in this building, it's in this corner also, so it can correct, connect directly to the infiltration, to the collection system in an overflow situation.
So that, it has a really small footprint?
Uh, yeah, I mean, the chambers are big, if you saw the chambers on the ground, wow, those are big, you know, so they're, they're over three feet wide, and they stand about, you know, three and a half feet tall, and there's three of them, and they go, they connect horizontally. So, I mean, they probably take up the space, you know, inside the, between the desks here, but, you know, relatively small to the size of the building and stuff, but the soils are so good here, we're able to do that. On a different site, it'd be a different story, it could be three times as many chambers.
Can you put them under the asphalt?
You could put them under the asphalt if we needed to.
Yeah, like the back two buildings?
Well, we just don't need to do anything with the back two buildings, because they get, that clean water gets discharged, gets piped directly to those basins, and the recharge occurs in the lower levels of those basins.
Okay.
So the original thought about the front two buildings, that roof water was being introduced and mixed with untreated stormwater, but having the recharge units separately, allowing the recharge of clean water, so you recharge of clean water, and then recharge of clean water occurring in the basin.
I have a couple of questions. The, you mentioned that the, the recharge, if there's a greater than, what, two and a quarter inch?
Two-inch storm, yeah.
A two-inch storm, it then, if there's any overflow, some of them have a pop-up that just dissipates, I mean, in a residential, I think, more.
Yeah, yeah.
But then that, is there a check valve on that? You say that anything over that is going to go into the drainage system?
Correct, yep. So there's a pipe, at the highest elevation possible of this dome chamber, there's an eight-inch pipe, so when the water, when the water can't infiltrate anymore, and it starts to rise inside this chamber, it goes out the pipe into the drainage system. Now, the beauty of that is when it goes into the drainage system, it still makes its way to the stormwater basin where recharge occurs. Treated and recharge occurs.
When you mention the word treated, it's pre-treatment before it gets into the?
Correct.
The detention basin?
The detention basin, correct.
How is that, what, what is that treatment?
It's a combination of, well, the stormwater that goes into the catch basins, their first level of treatment is a hood. So it, a hood on a catch basin acts like a septic tank, it keeps solids and floatables and sediments behind and allows the liquid to go through. You get about, you're allowed to, to get 25% treatment for catch basin hoods and outlets. Following the catch basin hoods and outlets, the water runs through a hydrodynamic separator. The hydrodynamic separator is a proprietary treatment device that is designed, accepted by DEP. The one, the one device that we specified provides a vortex types flow, type flow, and floatables and sediment and oils get trapped, and then they also drop out, so that provides us a fit, almost 60% of the treatment, and then the sediment, the sediment for bay, which is the portion of the detention basin at the beginning, provides, in conjunction with the infiltration, provides another 80%. So the way that the math works is, you get 25% of 100, and then whatever your balance is, so that'd be 75, 60% of, of the 70, of the remaining 75, then the 80% of the remainder of that. So it's in our stormwater report, the, the treatment train that occurs. So at the bottom of the treatment train, mathematically, we're over 93% of what they call total suspended solid removal, and based on your stormwater bylaw and your wetlands bylaw, we need to achieve over 92%, I believe, because when we do that, it also allows us to take credit for treating for phosphorus removal, which is required by the Grafton Wetland bylaw, and I believe also, you know, nitrogen removal. Normally, the state only requires 85% TSS removal, but achieving the requirement in the Grafton Wetland bylaw means that we also are providing nitrogen and phosphorus removal.
The, when the report came to the board and Jeff's review of it, I was actually surprised because I, I was looking for information on that. And the, the benefit is that when you have a direct recharge, it, it's directly down into the soil. So I was rather surprised when I didn't see the two rear buildings, and, you know, I can disregard the leasing office as being a major contributor, but I think that the, the fact is that it's, you know, your dug pits indicate that it's very porous soil, and as you indicated, perhaps one of the best soils that you could, you know, come across for, for drainage or for building. And I still think that this particular board member would like to see a direct recharge of those two rear buildings, because I, I really feel that, considering that this is a, it's, you know, it's, it's a big intrusion into what was there, and I'm not arguing the, the points of, the, you know, the right to someone to come forward and build it, but, you know, you're asking me to forego what is a doable task on the other two buildings, to allow it to mix then into, rather than going directly into the soil. And again, my major concern that I've expressed all along is that this is in a wellhead protection area, zone two. Now, you know, I, I understand that it's not going to affect the project, but the, the fact that it's there, and, and I listened to the select board's meetings recently, where the, the Grafton Water District is coming in to request a right-of-way of the town to lease a right-of-way into a lot where they can put in a new, and it's a multimillion-dollar water treatment facility, which will take care of some of their needs and the Trinity as well. So, you know, I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a big ask, in my opinion, for you as developers to, to have a direct drain of, from those two buildings, just as you have from the front buildings, because what you're describing, and I acknowledge the, the engineering of the, the smaller, the smaller detention basin and the larger one in the back, but you're still saying that, okay, the water, it, it's going to come in, and it's going to mix with the treated, you know, stormwater, but when it goes down directly in a heavy rain, and it gathers in those subsurface basins, it dissipates directly down into the soil, it's, it's a downward motion, and that aquifer in this neighborhood is an aquifer for the Trinity as well. And I just ask that further consideration be given to that particular, those two buildings in the back. And, and I looked forward to getting the reports when I saw the emails, and I looked at it, and I said, I sent an email to Jeff, I said, you know, why isn't, why isn't the, why aren't the back two buildings included in that? And, you know, Jeff responded to what was sent to him, and he, he agreed that they're engineered properly, I don't dispute that. But I, I do, I too take exception to the fact that the two in the rear, and again, I'm willing to disregard the leasing office, because that's, it's a much smaller footprint. But as I pointed out in my response to, you know, to Jeff, I mean, this is basically a, a field that has for generations, forever in this town, been recharging that aquifer, and, and I just-
Fertilizer.
Okay, all right, I, I, I'm trying to understand what we're, what we're after here. So I'm going to approach the, this picture, if I understand correctly, and I know, Bill, I'm not talking into the microphone, I'll try to go here. If I understand correctly, if, if we were to do what Bill wants, the water from this building would go into something probably here?
Yeah, yeah.
And then down into the aquifer?
Right.
And what you're proposing is taking the water from the building over to here, where it goes down in the aquifer?
Correct.
What is, I don't, what are we gaining there?
It's mixing with wastewater, when you have a subsurface drain-
93% clean wastewater that our Grafton bylaw, which is above and beyond the state, says is okay.
I'm just saying that-
What about evaporation, though? Is there any evaporation? Because this is an open infiltration basin, so do you lose some in that respect?
Negligible, I mean, and, and what, the unique part about the roof drains is that that water gets to these basins first, it's a direct pipe, short run. The other water that gets into these basins, you know, comes all the way from a catch basin in Pleasant Street, catch basins throughout the site. The water that gets into these basins that will be recharged is the first water to get there, the first drop of rainfall that falls out of the sky and lands on the roof is the first drop of water in the stormwater basins, before the other water even gets there.
So, so Steve, I just want to make sure, I, I got it right, right?
Yeah, because that was-
It either goes here, or it goes here, and here it's going to mess with 93% clean, for block of better terms, if I'm sure there's a better term for it. So here, or here?
Exactly, in the same logic, and that's what's going to be my exact response.
I'm sorry, Bill, I don't, I don't see the benefit of what we're pushing in.
Well, I, you know, I, I respectfully disagree with Vice Chair McCusker, because the benefit of a subsurface system is you're directly driving down the rainwater into the soil beneath the 2.4 football fields, is what it's equivalent to, on the, the impervious soil, the change from what it is now to what it's going to be. And I don't think there's justification, and, you know, we're, we're talking pure water coming in off the roof runoff, and going down into those, into those wells, as you describe them, and then it dissipates directly into the soil. I think that, and, you know, I've, I've taken it, I guess, upon myself to, to really look hard at the water issues. I don't have a well, I use, I'm in the South Grafton Water District, but when I saw them up before the select board, talking about, you know, and, and that's probably a five-year plan before they, before they put a shovel in the ground and build their water treatment facility, I think that we owe it to that water table, no, excuse me, that, not that water table, that aquifer, to put as much pure water as we can into the ground that is generated by this project, and I hear what you're saying as far as the treatment of it, but I respectfully disagree with the vice chair. I think that, I think it should be, we should consider-
We're getting repetitive, you know, I'll just say, I think for anything, there is a point of diminishing returns. There's probably a whole boatload of things we could do to put more water directly into the ground. I'm sure, Steve, you're aware of a lot more things we could do, but there becomes a point of diminishing returns, and, and we have to consider that. Mr. Hill, you want to say something?
It's my understanding that this can be quantified, and I, I think, doesn't your hydroscap model, can't you, can't you tell us what the recharge volume is from a direct infiltration versus a, versus a basin? And, and you're saying it's negligible, but isn't that something that you could spit out?
Yeah, it's in, it's in our, it's in our stormwater reports now.
No, but I mean, to compare it apples to apples, I, I mean, can you, can you-
Your, well, your initial comment was about evaporation, and I said that was negligible.
Right.
So, you know.
But is the recharge, I mean, your model, I think, spits out a recharge volume number.
It does, yeah.
And, and would that number be the same? Because I, I think that's the point here, is that if the, if the number is the same or negligibly different, then-
It would be the same.
I think Bill's concern is that it may not be the same, and so I think if, if it is the same, Bill, I'm assuming you'd agree, if, if it's off by like 10 gallons of water or something negligible, this wouldn't be an issue, right? I mean, your, your concern is that the recharge might be less by going into the basin than it would be by direct infiltration, and I, I'm saying, I think there's a way to calculate that.
Yeah, it is the same, and I can quickly, you know, respond to this, it's the same because the way that recharge in a basin works is you're required, under DEP's Stormwater Management Standards, to provide a certain volume of recharge based on your impervious area and your soil conditions that exist on the site. So we're, we're adding impervious, and we have A soils, so the, the, the standard is the highest you could, you could ask for, or they could require. So we're exceeding that standard. To meet that standard or exceed it, the volume of, of, that has to be provided to meet the recharge requirement, happens in the bottom of the basin below the lowest outlet. So imagine you had a bathtub, but the drain was on the side and not the bottom, the water would never drain once it got below that drain on the side, right? That's the way a stormwater basin works by current standards. When water is allowed to leave out little pipes and outlets and orifices, the amount of water, the volume below that lowest outlet is, has to be the recharge volume. So for except, with the exception of evaporation possibilities and transpiration, that water is expected to recharge. So the, the, you know, the model expects you have a volume of water, you have an infiltration rate based on soil conditions, that volume will infiltrate at that rate proportionally to the volume you have and the size of the area you've provided to meet that volume.
Thank you, Steve. So I, my, what I propose at this point is, you know, maybe, Dan, we can, you can draft a condition that says they have to do this, and then we can vote as a board, we can have more discussion we want to, we can vote as a board, you know, if we want to, you know, have them do this or not. In the meantime, you know, I, I would like to have Jeff in the building to be able to respond to this as well, because I'm not an engineer, and Bill's not an engineer, and I don't know if anyone else here really knows, so let's get our professionals in here and get their opinion. But, you know, I, I think we've talked about this enough right now, unless anyone else on the board has something to say, let's table it, and we can make a decision at some point before we finalize it, whether or not we want to, you know, force this issue or not.
Yeah, and I'd, I'd like to speak at that point, or now. We, I think during the last meeting, I was kind of somewhat surprised, because we had a closed-out report, drainage report, from Jeff from Graves, and I kind of got thrown a little curveball, wanting the two buildings up front going into the ground, in the scope of willingness to work with everything, and I said, okay, no, no, no problems, I was kind of a surprise. So here I am, again, getting thrown the kind of slider this time, so I'm just wondering how important this is when we've already known a couple meetings ago that already meets all the DEP standards and, of course, some of the town stuff, but I don't want to take it a life of its own again.
I'm somewhat sensitive to that as well, I mean, you know, but these are preliminary, right? Or, or the idea at this stage is things are preliminary, so that's why we could certainly condition it, and that's something when you get into final engineering could be done if the board decides they want to do it, and, you know, whether, you know. So, you know, I, I, I don't want to necessarily make you guys do any more engineering work at this point in time.
Yep.
You know, and that's why, I said, when I said, you know, if we really, if this board really wants that to happen, then we can make it a condition of the permit, and you deal with it.
Sure. My, at, at the board's request, my intent was to try to have a real finalized engineering set of plans at the end of this meeting, rather than a resubmission, and we'll get into that with the waivers, because that's what I dealt with it with Wheel Rock. So our intent is to try to, I'll spend the money up front to get a real good set of plans that we go with.
I, I understand that.
That's all.
I understand that, and quite frankly, I appreciate it, I think that's a good approach. But, you know, for this issue, I don't think we need to, I think, I think we've, I think we've got a good handle on this issue, and I'd like to just table the discussion until we have our professionals in the building as well.
Bill, can you just ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
For the proposal that Bill's asking for, is there any technical limitation in doing so?
Technical limitations?
Yeah, just because of the landscape, or you don't have the area?
No, I just think there's a logic component in my brain, and a, and a point of diminishing returns, you know, as Mr. McCusker said, I, I don't think adding what we did for the front two buildings provides any more than, than what we're already providing.
Got you. Thank you.
I mean, I think it really just comes down to math.
Yeah.
It's a recharge volume issue, and that's, the issue is, are we recharging as much as we can to the, to the aquifer serving the well? And it, it's a numbers, it's, it's truly a mathematical exercise, and if the recharge volume is the same between a pond and a direct infiltration system, then there is no gain. If it's different, then we should look at it.
Yes.
And to that point, Mr. Vice Chair, to Dan's point, you know, I'll make my last comment in this, that I feel, I feel I owe it in my due diligence efforts to ask that the two buildings recharge directly into the soil beneath it, because anything that we can do to ensure that the future water in the town that you'll all be drinking long after I'm gone will be sustainable, and that's why I'm focused on the water as much as I've been focused on it.
I, I understand that, I think, I think we all understand that, and quite frankly, I appreciate it, you know, and it's unfortunate that the water department doesn't seem to feel the same way, but it is what it is. Okay, anyone else on the board have a comment about this issue? You're not on the board.
You're not on the board? Pretend it a bit. I realize what, what we're meeting, where we're at, and we have another one. We'll look at reviewing the two other buildings, tying them into, into, and then getting a rough email with Jeff corresponding back, I'm sure he's going to have no responses with that, if it can, can be done, I don't have an issue redoing it once again, but I hope it closes out and makes Mr. Yeomans appreciate what, what we've done here, so I have no problems doing this.
Okay, that, that helps. And I think, you know, the, the numbers that Dan was asking about as well, I was, the last thing I was going to say was, you know, if there's somewhere in that reports and numbers that are already spilt out, or you've had to push some buttons, you know, I think that would help as well.
Yeah, I think Jeff would provide the, the resource for you, you know, professional isn't it you're looking for on the board's side, to confirm that information is readily available, yeah.
Okay, all right.
So, sorry, one last question. So is that, is that something Jeff can just, without any input from the applicant, just do for us based on what he already has?
I believe so, and if he feels like you need something, he could, he would probably just reach out.
You'd have to run a calculation on those chambers, right? Jeff can't do that, it's your-
Jeff has it, because that's what's part of the chambers for the first two buildings. Jeff has it, because that's what is part of the chambers for the first two buildings. It would be this.
Oh, you'd extrapolate from those?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I interpret is that Jeff would be able to extract it from what you've already got.
Yep.
Yeah.
What we've given them.
Whereas we we can't, I don't know what we're looking at, but Jeff should be the professional to do it. That's why, okay, I think we're all on the same page. All right. Good discussion. I think it's an important point, and I'm, you know, I'm glad we were able to hammer it out, and I'm appreciative to the applicant for for trying to address it and do the right thing for for the area. So next up then, I guess, is the waiver requests. So we, at our last, yeah, at the last meeting, we did go through them. And now there's a new version. How, I guess, Steve, how how would you recommend we go through this?
Well, I don't recall there being any lingering, I shouldn't say that. There may have been one or two.
Yeah, I think there was.
Zoning, biro waivers, general biro waivers.
I guess where I'm headed is, I don't see any red lines or anything. So is there any way or can you lead us through what's new?
Absolutely.
You know, like, you know, and maybe just, maybe it's to start at the top and just fly through them. Like, I can tell the first one is already, we've already talked about, so.
Yeah, so the only new waivers, and I have my notes from them from the last meeting, our waivers. The only new waivers added were, per our discussion, subdivision rules and regs, which start on the on page four.
So page four of the new document.
So four and five are the extent of what's new, and I have notes.
All right, hang on.
Yep.
So so right off the bat on the first page, so I see section three, two, three, two. That wasn't on the the last one we looked at. So the second row of the table.
Right, yeah, that was that was for building height, correct?
Oh, yeah, I didn't even read the rest of it, yeah, building height.
Yeah, I don't think that one made it into the first revision.
Okay.
I don't have any notes that we had a need to add that. No, maybe it'd just be cleaner if we started at the beginning then. Apologize. Do you recall why we added that?
Yeah, so the way that the building height is measured in Grafton, it's taken as an average from all four sides of a building. So because we have a walkout, you know, the total height might end up being a little bit above the thirty five feet. So we just figured having that in here to make it clean and make sure we're covered for all four.
So it's actually a building code definition meeting called median grade.
Yep.
It's less than fifty percent of the site is at a certain elevation, especially in a walkout. It it tells you where you need to measure your building height from.
Yep. Okay.
So do you have a building that's forty five feet tall?
From the walkout lower side, it would be.
Right, it'd be forty five.
Forty, yeah.
But but we define it as an average, no?
Yeah, so the this waiver is basically written to encapsulate the worst case scenario. It's going to be less than that, but without having done the calculation for the different building types. I guess that's what we.
Because the building inspector would, upon issuance of the building permit, would make that determination.
Right, but this, the way you've worded it would allow a building of up to forty five feet, which the board may not want to allow if you don't need that.
You know, I agree, I I was going to recommend that at the very least that we, you know, qualify this two buildings, what is that, three and four back there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, and I I understand the problem with the average height.
We could even say as measured from the, you know, the backside.
You can't, I I'm confused, you can't do this exercise now, you can't, you can't, you don't know now what your grading is going to look like around the building?
Well, I think certain details and aspects of our of detailed architectural plans could, you know, if if, let's say, there's a window on the side of the building where it's a walkout, and that grade changes, that could change the median grade.
Right.
Around the building.
Do you know how, how, is it four corners averaged, or is it literally the whole linear run?
That's my experience is the linear line.
Really? Okay. Yeah, I think we went through this with that warehouse when it was here briefly in front of us. Okay.
But, I mean, you know, we're we're certainly open to, you know, being as specific as we can. We can limit it to those back to buildings. We could limit it, you know, we could use words that are limiting and that, you know. Our intentions are literally because of the situation with two walkout building scenarios.
I I, you know, look, so the backside of those buildings is forty five feet, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Yeah. You know, I I think I'm comfortable with a waiver as long as it's tied to those two buildings. Right, I mean.
But but that's not what this says, so if you're.
No, it has to be changed.
Yeah. No, but but also, it's not just the backside that's forty five feet. Theoretically, the backside could be fifty five feet if the if the front was thirty five feet. So if your intent was to keep it back at forty five feet, we should say that. Do you follow me?
I do.
Yeah.
That's what you were saying.
So not the average, just the maximum height from the ground at any point would not exceed whatever.
Or just say average. If you're okay with potentially that being fifty five feet back there, it probably doesn't matter since it's the back of the building, no one's going to see it.
Yeah, I guess I guess I'm kind of thinking that, you know, they already know that the backside asks me forty five feet to get three stories. I'm just not sure how much, you know, and, you know, I'm kind of doing some geometry in my head, but I'm just not sure how much how much gamesmanship you really could have going on there. I mean, it's, that's that's really kind of tying them in. Well, the average, right, so forty five, so they, I guess they could go with a fifty foot backside. They could raise the whole building by five feet, you know, I.
Is it existing grade or or finished grade?
Finished grade.
Finished grade?
Yep.
So they could really raise it up.
Is that what this building? Or is this the old building?
What am I raising? What am I raising up?
Well, if you raise the building, you're raising the ground.
I'm not saying you're going to.
Yeah, I mean, if anything, you would increase your floor to floor height.
I'm assuming you have no intention of raising.
No.
Right.
And we know that on the backside, based on it's that it's forty.
Yeah, like I said before, I'm trying to get a finalized set of plans, so they're walkouts. I'm not going to make it a non-walk and fill it. I'd have to come back to to you guys.
Yeah.
Making the waiver requests specific.
There's just something we noticed that, because it's a walkout units down below where where it's low, it's actually kind of like four stories, so.
I I don't know, I think it's okay just to, you know, so 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 I have two comments. One, I I'm okay restricting it to the to the two buildings. And B, it probably wouldn't be too difficult to to run the numbers against it at some point, I think. You know, what what is the average as it sits on paper right now? And, you know, that may make other members of the board more comfortable. If you can turn around and say, you know, a forty three foot average would be fine, forty foot average would be fine. And, you know, and you still have a couple of feet to play with and that sort of thing, so.
I mean, one thing we know for certain architecturally that it's ten feet from floor to floor. So walkout floor to first floor floor is ten feet.
Right.
So we comply with the thirty five on the front. It's literally just that walkout side.
Is it exactly thirty five in the front?
Thirty, thirty four and a half, thirty four, eight inches.
You got the fake roof going up too.
Yeah. Yeah.
They must count that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep, so, yeah, I mean, it's like within four inches of thirty five.
I guess logically that makes sense.
So you could say that too. You could say the 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 front of these buildings cannot exceed thirty five feet, and that would control them adding any fill if they did.
Yep.
Yeah, if it came back and needed six inches, I'm sure I'll come in back in here for an insubstantial change or something like that.
But that's certainly not anticipated.
Yes. So let's just do something like that. I mean, you know, the the goal is to avoid a fifty foot building that pops up, I don't know, right?
Yeah, yeah. On the front side.
Okay.
Agreed. So we can work on that wording.
Yep.
And then, I guess, you know, discussions that we continue from tonight would be on the decision, which will incorporate waivers we can kind of chew on, yeah.
I mean, ju- just to clarify, Dan, and, you know, the waivers essentially end up going into the decision. Oftentimes, exactly as they're written here or nearly as they're written here, right? So 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 it's just a case of fine tuning the the wording, and then boom, that goes into the decision.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Okay. How do you want to proceed? Do you want to just go down the new list, just avoid any confusion?
Yeah, I I think I think that would be the best thing to do. Like, even now, I'm looking at, it looks like there's new language here for special cases, so, you know. But then we get to four, 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 two, two, that looks exactly the same, so we just blast right by the stuff that hasn't changed. Right, so I I see three, three, one, special cases, just a couple of lines, distance between structures.
Yeah, so there's two, three, three ones.
Yeah. So the second one is what we've already talked about. Well, actually.
Yeah, the orig- the the previous waiver request had two, three, three ones also. So I just think that we're.
Oh, I see, I'm sorry, you're right.
Down, I just noticed that too.
I just noticed it, yeah, okay.
Down a notch.
All right, so the first one's okay. The second one, it says waiver to all less than forty five feet, it used to say less than thirty five feet. You know, no, my note I had for the second one was whether the fire department's okay, and I think we have.
Correct.
And then twenty feet for the leasing building.
Where is this an issue? The twenty, the twenty feet is where the.
The leasing building.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want to say that in this waiver decision that it's allowed as to the leasing building?
I I don't object adding that, I think.
It doesn't really matter.
We don't object, yeah.
You have to build this plan, so it's not like.
Yeah.
That's what we've struggled with too, with the town plan.
Yep. Okay, so then four, two, two, off street parking, that's, we've already done that.
I have a question on that, Bill.
Okay. Yeah.
The question I have, are the garages eliminated?
No, no, I think you're thinking of the other job.
Yeah, it's up.
Pardon me?
I think you're thinking of the other project.
Upton, Upton Street is going to be.
Yeah, no garages eliminated here.
No garages.
No, no, the garages have not been eliminated. There was never discussed to eliminate them here. So we have.
Just Upton. Yeah, okay.
Yep, and those garage bays are counted in the parking total, because there's nothing in front of the garage door obstructing that to happen.
Okay.
I mean, what, you know, they're over two, and and this board has always been comfortable with two, and that's that's over the, you know, the standards that people talk about.
What, if I may, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, what accommodation is given to visitors into this project?
Well, mathematically, there's ample parking for visitors. There are no designated visitors.
There are no.
Yeah, what 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 the fire department asked for and is on the revised plans is there's three parking spaces adjacent to the leasing office that have signage that say parking for future tenants, you know, a little marketing scheme. So that when when folks actually want to park and go to the leasing office, they have designated spaces, they're not forced to park, you know, over here and walk to the leasing office. It was just not really a fire matter, but something that they thought of, and we thought, well, now's the time to add it while we're incorporating changes, other changes they requested, you know, a couple of months ago. So other than that, there's no designated marked, signed, painted visitor parking.
So.
Go ahead.
You done? Okay, so so, all right, my notes from last week, I have overwritten the two sixteen down to two thirteen. So are we sure that two sixteen's the number?
So those three parking spaces, if we, and and this is, I'm glad you brought that up because I have the same note, is are the three parking spaces we've designated for the public to access the trails which are here. So it might be safer, I'm not sure if Dan has any input on this, but, you know, there's two hundred and sixteen spaces. Three of them may never be used by the public, and they're there, but they're reserved for the public. There's signage that say for trail access, public parking for trail access.
And your note in the plan says non-resident parking.
Yeah, non-project resident parking.
So it should be two thirteen, not two sixteen.
So, yeah, look, we can do that, and and that changes the ratio to two point oh five.
Yeah, we're still above two, so.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so I, so I was, I was gonna say, let's let's maybe just be clear, it's two, there's two thirteen plus three public trail access spots or something like that.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, go ahead, Brian.
How many spots are counted in the garages?
Eight, sixteen, twenty total spaces.
And do you have any information on how many of those are actually used to park cars versus storage?
I mean, I haven't seen any of the projects not have a car in it.
Typically, our experience with apartment communities is they're all used to park cars.
Come up to the mic.
It would be on the microphone, Chris.
Chris Horn, Eastland Partners, typically, our experience is that the garages are always used for vehicle storage.
Chris, property management for Eastlands.
They're they're wide open bays, right? They're not individual locked units.
No, they are.
No, they're not, I mean, they're.
Yeah, so each one of the bays will have its own typical residential garage door that a resident, you know, would pay for access to.
But when I walk in, when I walk in my my garage, I can see all the other ones, right? Or they're walls separating.
Wall separating.
Right.
Yep.
Wall separating.
Yes, that's correct.
All right, so those could be storage. We really don't know. And and this is, this is a problem we 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 struggle with with, you know, the condo developments and all that have garages is more often than not, those garages end up full of storage.
Probably write it into our lease.
But still, we're, you know, I'm still, we've had the same discussion. I mean, you know, when when they're building a condo, those garages count as a parking spot. We know that oftentimes there's storage, but, you know, we're up at that two, you know, parking spots per unit, and I I'm comfortable, I'm I'm okay with it.
Could also put it into the lease documents as a condition that it be in the lease documents.
Yes, only for adults.
Storage in buildings like that is probably something that the property owner wants to deal with, because they could be, you know, just like a storage unit you rent, you're not allowed to have, you know, propane tanks and things like that in there, so probably something they want to have control over.
There's no parking on the outside of the garage.
Correct.
And you're you're going to be leasing out the garage spaces, right?
That's correct.
So they'll be premium with those garage spaces. Are you going to be leasing the parking spaces in the parking lot too, or?
No, no.
That's free?
That's free, yeah.
And the affordable unit owners, I'm assuming they would not have access, I guess they would have access to the garages if they want to pay for them, but it's not going to be.
Yeah.
There's no discount.
Yeah, no.
Okay.
I expressed the concern, you know, in another project, I understand, you know, this project, but I have a I have a roadblock relative to the parking garages. We have had almost, not quite a violent discussion at previous Waterbees at Prentice Place. There is no place to park here, and it's almost like we're assuming, and this is an affordable housing project, that's what's driving this. The exceptional person that can pay their rent and pay for a parking space is treated very differently. It's almost to the, I look at the the parking garages have almost eliminated the thought that most of the people in this apartment complex will have no visitors, will have no overnight stays, will have no, you know, and, you know, I, I'm just, I'm just not in favor of, this particular person is not in favor of the garages on this site. I think that by opening up and eliminating the garages, and I know that there's an economic impact on that, but by eliminated, eliminating the garages, everybody in that complex is on an equal basis. And my rent may be higher on the first floor than on the third floor, but, you know, when we come in fighting for a space at night, it's, it's, everybody's equal. So, you know, I'm not in favor of the garages in this. I think it would free up, how many spaces would it give you additionally?
You know, and for an eight bay garage, you might get nine parking spaces.
So you have.
So you get one extra per, you know, three total extra maybe.
So you got. So what, twenty seven?
So we'd go from twenty to twenty three.
Twenty three, okay.
The twenty garage spaces would turn to twenty three surface spaces.
Again, I think that, I think that a lot of people who are going to live in this building will have visitors. And when you think of the impacts that people have on someone coming in to take care of an elderly person or someone coming in to take care of kids during the day, when two people are working, you know, I think that it, it it just strikes me as being something that should not, we should not be allowing in in Grafton, considering that it's it's a hundred and four unit project. and considering that it's, it's a hundred and four unit project. And if you don't have the garage, everybody's equal. Everybody's, you know, grabs a shovel and shovels out their own car and, you know, I just think it's uh, you know, I, I, this, this board member is not in favor of the garages.
Well, I mean, you know, you, you're basically saying that every unit's gonna have two cars parked there, which of course is, is just not the reality. And so, uh, you know, even the people who have a garage are gonna have to shovel out their car. They're gonna have a car that's not, you know, in that garage, but, you know, um, how, how many spots do you want to have, Bill? So we've got two hundred and three right now. No, two hundred and thirteen.
And, and that's, so if you didn't have the garages, that would create, what, four more?
Three.
Three more. So now you're two sixteen.
Two sixteen.
I think there's a, there's a, an imbalance on on, on the project in general, just that uh, it's the, the select few that are going to be able to afford to park in the garage. And I just think that, you know, that's uh, that's.
If, if this were a market rate development, there, we'd have, it'd be the same issue, only a small percentage of the people could have a garage. I don't think that it's a, the fact that it's a forty B makes a difference. It's a marketing decision.
Yeah, makes no, makes absolutely no difference. If I wanna, if any one of us wanna live in an apartment, I, I wanna have a possibly my parking spot in a garage and I'll pay the extra hundred and fifty a month or whatever it might be.
And an affordable could also.
Yeah, and they could, they could do the same thing. Absolutely.
It's like a first come, first served.
It really is, yeah. It's, it's really a premium.
Half of them, they could all be affordable people parking in that garage because they're paying less for the unit.
It's very, yeah, that's true too.
It's kinda fair, really. It's first come, first served.
I mean, if you were building eighty garages, then I might have something to say.
Yeah, now I get it.
Twenty affordability out of it or, you know, twenty-five affordability out of it.
Yeah.
The, the only thing I question about the garages, especially the one that's right by the Pleasant Street. If, if, yeah, if you were lucky enough, if you had one raining like hell and all the spots right across from it were taken up, I wouldn't park my car in that garage at night. I'd find a place that's closer to my door. Which is, so then you're losing a spot, but.
Yeah.
Without reserved parking, that's just the nature of these kind of developments if you don't have designated parking.
I mean, that would be just me on, on, on that occasion.
Well, that actually raises a good point, right? I mean, someone could rent these garages, it goes to your point, to use them as storage.
Right.
And then take up another surface spot.
Yeah.
And how do you control that?
Well, I think his.
He's already.
Yeah, we'll, we'll build it in the lease.
You got it, right. You gotta enforce it.
Bob Berger goes down there and looks inside the garage.
Right.
Our maintenance people, they're, they, they're somewhat open air too because they have to be. So you can kinda see inside as well.
They'll be calling the select board.
He's looking for you.
Well, I mean, we can come up with all kinds of instances with those garages. You could, you could have with, because this is mainly one-bedroom apartments. If you've got a bunch of single guys living there, they got a second car, vet or something, and they park it in the garage and park their other car.
Yeah, I mean, you know.
There's a million things you can come up with.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not guilty of that. I'll take it a fifth on that one.
You know, I think of like Craftsman Court, you know, those, each one of those units had, I think, two-car garages. Um, now, you know, that, no, their number was higher when you counted the garages, but, you know, you know that a lot of those car, garages aren't being used. And there's been other projects, you know, that, that have had garages. And, you know, it's, it's, it comes, kinda comes with the territory that, that, you know, yeah, there, some of them are not gonna be used for parking. And that's why, one of the reasons that we insist on getting up to that two point oh and, you know, and the standards, our own professional parking engineers and they, what's the standard, like one point six or?
Seven.
One point six, one point seven, so, you know, so we're adding another thirty spots or so beyond what the standards say. I, I don't know. I, I'm comfortable, you know, you know, I, there's a couple of projects in this town that I, I think are absolutely gross because the parking is so tight and, and cars are parked on the edges of the road and that sort of stuff. And I've always said I don't ever wanna have my name associated with a project like that. That's not gonna happen here. I'm very comfortable that that's not gonna be a problem here. That's my feeling.
Could I ask a quick question, Bill?
Yeah.
While we have this plan up and we're talking about the, the layout. Um, on, on the ends of those buildings in the front, there, there appear to be landscaping, right? It, it, can you just describe what that is? Is that a, is it a lawn or is it a planting bed? What is that?
It's, yes, it's, it's lawn, so, you know, substantially lawn with uh, with, there'll be some, some shrubs, a landscaping plan that was submitted, you know, so some shrubs on the end, but then those are uh, just isolated trees with, you know, probably a circle of mulch around the bottom.
So there's a curb, it looks like there's a curb.
Yep, there's a curb and a sidewalk.
Is that elevated or is that at the same level as the?
No, six-inch curb.
But, but the bed itself, which, which is, the, the, the area that's inside the curb, is that like an elevated bed with?
Should be about this, you know, you'll have the curb, the sidewalk at the same grade as the top of the curb, and then the landscape should, the lawn, you know, other than what you would need to just naturally drain water away from the building, like, you know, two percent pitch. It's the same grade as the sidewalk.
Alright, I, I feel, I feel like there probably should be a note on the landscape plan because the landscape plan, I don't feel like I pulled up, but it, it doesn't say what that is at all. It just, it's blank. So.
And what, but, but, how is this relevant?
Well, it's not relevant to parking, but I.
Oh, okay.
I'm just looking at the landscape plan and I, I don't see any note, maybe I'm missing it, but I, I don't think there's any note that says what is proposed in those locations.
Around the actual trees and shrubs.
And I'm sure that's important to the board that you're showing it as green, so.
Yep.
I think it should be labeled as green.
I can look at the landscape plan and see if I notice something, but.
Yeah, our whole point was try to get a, abundance of grass, perhaps maybe fifteen feet of grass, maybe a six or seven foot, you know, mulch bed with, you know, the shrubs, the trees and the, you know, in the grass strip, of course.
So, it, on the second page of the landscape plan, in the front of each of the buildings, it says lawn typical, you know, it doesn't say, it doesn't have that note on the ends.
What sheet number?
Two, L dash two point zero.
Yeah, I was looking at one point zero and that, that.
Yeah.
When you look at the ends of the buildings, it's just nothing there. I mean, it, just add a note that says, you know, um, lawn, lawn slash plantings or something to that effect, just so we know that's a natural area and not concrete.
Lawn shall be, uh, you know, lawn shall be installed in places where no plantings are proposed or shown.
Does that prevent you from mulching?
There is law.
Yeah.
You, you don't want that to be concrete.
Well, yeah.
Lawn and mulch.
No, I, I, I get Dan's point now, yeah.
Yeah, no, it definitely won't be concrete. Uh, but yeah, we could, so a land, a revised landscaping plan is substantially complete. So it's perfect timing. I'll just make sure that that's crystal clear.
Okay.
Are you planning on filing something soon or?
Well, I figured this discussion will, we wouldn't be closing the hearing tonight, so.
Right.
Plans, anything that came of this meeting, um, including the dry well situation for the roofs would be part of a final plan set you'd have in your possession when you close the hearing.
Okay. So we're expecting a new plan set before the next session?
Yeah, but it's, like, I think you and I discussed today, the August first plan set, which you did not appear on the uh, zoning board's website, that was the set of plans that the conservation approved. I think what, what happened is we were ex- potentially gonna submit that to you. We were past the deadline, conservation commission meeting happened. Went to the next meeting thinking anything came of discussion of the waivers and it didn't, and we're just kind of in this weird position. But I think we can take advantage of that now.
Yeah, we thought they were substantially complete, but it's kinda changing a little tonight.
Alright, so, um, you know, I, I hope we're not gonna rehash every single one of these, you know. Yeah, we'll be here till tomorrow. Um, so, um, so the next one is four point two three three. Um, I don't have okay written that, next to that in my uh, notes. I just have specifics with a question mark. I'm not sure, I'm not sure what the issue was here, to be honest.
Two point three point three.
Four two three three, right.
I think we were questioning, kinda, my notes indicate that we were kinda questioning the, the, the need, cuz it.
That could be.
So my note, I, I cer- so it says waiver to allow the parking area to be located closer to the side and rear lot lines than the distance is specified as minimum yards in the intensity of use schedule and to allow parking to be located in front of the building line. So I think because the way, because we have multifamily buildings on one lot, we would have building setback lines that could theoretically be applicable, but, you know, what's, what's considered the front of this? If this is the front of the lot, is this the front of the building from a parking standpoint with, as written in bylaw? So it was a little bit of a catch-all type waiver request, one of those if we didn't ask for, if someone came along and said, oh, you didn't meet that.
No, at the very least, you, you would need to see how Burger, how, you know, Mr. Burger.
Providing parking on the, you could argue is the front of the building because it's the front of the lot.
Right, absolutely.
Parking there. I think that's the logic.
Alright.
Would that apply to the, like, on the top of the plan there? Is, is that, would that be within the setback, that parking?
No. No, well, um.
So is there, is there any parking area that's within a setback? So do you even need a waiver?
You sure about that side parking?
What is the setback requirement?
Well, yeah, this is residential, right?
So yeah, fifteen.
So it's fifteen, so that's.
It's twenty, twenty foot, twenty, twenty-five, it's twenty-five foot easement, so.
Unless there was something else that this related to, but I, I don't see there'd be a need for a waiver.
Well, I think again, it just, it's, you know, um, nor shall be located in the area to the front of the building line.
So that one, it sounds like you would need it. Yeah, so I mean, what you say is waiver to allow parking areas closer than the side and rear lot lines. That, I'm not so sure you need. And then, um, parking located in front of the building, I think you do need.
So why do we straighten?
Well, actually, that's kinda what I even kinda might, I kinda scratched out, I think, most of it and just, the idea was keeping in front of the building line.
Yep.
Yes, Mr. Yeomans.
Um, I have a note from the last uh, waiver list. Has the chief and the fire department, have they approved all of the corridors and?
They have definitely approved all that, those aspects. We're only waiting for them to acknowledge the results of a meeting with them earlier this week, um, regarding like uh, mechanical stair chair.
Right, uh, we, we have that letter from, from Claire.
Oh, yeah, right. Yeah, that was on the, that would get added to the website, yeah. So we just don't have a response from them that would kinda check the box. Verbally, we feel satisfied, you know, that they're satisfied. We just need you to feel that they're satisfied.
The, and now, I can raise that question now in the fire department bill or later, or whatever you want.
Wha- what's that?
Well, just the, the access, did they uh, clarify their access from the rear of the building?
Yeah, so that's the issue.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's not, yeah, let's table that.
Okay.
That's, that's not really tied to the uh, waivers. Alright, so we have edits that you need to do to four two three three. Four two four five, um, I, you know, this was, um, trees replaced as depicted in, in the plan set. Again, I'm not sure, at some point, I'd written something like show me, but then I crossed that out and I don't have an okay next to this. I don't know if there was an outstanding issue here or not.
I have an okay in my notes, but I don't know if you were thinking something and we didn't talk about it or I didn't write it down.
No, I, I, I think I had a question. I think it was answered. I just didn't write the okay. I, I think this, this seems to be okay. Anybody have any objections to that? Four, alright, so then four four two one one, we talked about that. Electric sign is not prevent permitted, waiver to allow electric sign at entrance of the project. Is that, that's still the plan, right? Electric sign, so I meant four, four two one one?
Yep, correct. And, um.
It wasn't all, it was illuminated.
There's just a, there's just something illuminating, right?
Yeah.
Can we use that language then?
Yeah.
Yes, please.
Alright, so illuminated sign, not electric sign. I suppose it is electric.
Sounds like the hotel.
Yeah, yeah.
Neon, neon. Lights go flashing.
Hotel six.
Alright, um, alright, then four four three five, it should have been okay. Then we get to five two two one. We were allowed construction of a hundred and four units. I think, I think this was okay as well.
That's what I have.
Um, then you have another five two two one. We were allowed buildings have length of a hundred and fifty-three feet, so this is new. The second five two two one?
Nope, I have it in my old one.
Well, you're right. Alright, I skipped over. You're right. Alright, so those are okays. Five two two three, okay.
Bill, I have a, excuse me, I have a question on two, five two two one. Does that come into play with the lack of your ability to accommodate the fire department requests for a walkway? Does the length of the building obviously comes into play on that?
Nope, not at all because the, the wa- yeah, the walkway they were, they want us to inquire about would have been, you know, a ground level, you know, not, not, not a building feature.
Okay.
Site feature.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Alright, uh, five two two three is okay, and then uh, we get the seven point five E, and that I had hold on that. And I'm not sure why. We were allowed more than twenty-five percent of five thousand square foot, whichever is grade of any lot area rendered impervious upon conveyance of the open space parcel, the calculated area will be at forty-one percent. So is that the issue? Is why after the conveyance?
Yeah, because the open space that's gonna be conveyed to the town would be open space in perpetuity.
Yeah.
Presumably, I think it's a safe assumption. So with regards to protecting the water supply protection overlay district, it makes perfect sense that you would incorporate that area in the calculation. But if we don't, and if nobody wanted to, and everyone agreed that we don't wanna, then the real calculation's forty-one percent. So it was on here, I think, as a waiver, you know, again, kind of a, let's cast the net, talk about it, so. If the board agrees, uh, one way or the other, it would affect the need for a waiver. Because we meet the twenty-five percent if we incorporate the twelve point five one acres, but if we just incorporate the development parcel, which is seven point, wherever it is, seven point one, seven point seven, then, then the number mathematically is forty-one percent.
I, I think it should be the forty-one percent and the waiver.
I don't object as long as you agree the way to the waiver.
Yeah, I mean.
The effectiveness is there. It's just a numbers thing.
I'm, I'm okay with the waiver. I disagree with what Brian just said. I, I, I think it should be the, the, the initial calculation, but I don't care either way.
Yeah.
I'm okay, I, I should say, I'm okay with the waiver as well.
Yeah.
Alright, so let's just leave it in, do the waiver. Any other comments on that?
No.
Alright, so general bylaws, um, application and fees. Um, I don't have an okay written next to this. I have how much written next to this. Well, um, why would we not require a filing fee?
Usually filing fees are provided to cover the cost of the individual of the town staff to do their job. But the Grafton, the Conservation Commission did nothing with regards to their uh, bylaw review because they, this was being handled by the ZBA. And your review uh, took place overlapping because Jeff did his review, you know, at the same time as reviewing uh, the conference of permit.
Dan, do you know, is this something we've waived in the past?
I don't remember. Was, did you?
Do we know how much money we're talking about?
Not off the top of my head.
When you saw, when you read Prentice, did we deal with this there or?
I don't recall. I have okay.
So now I know why I wrote how much, so, um.
Uh, we could, we could, we could look it up pretty quickly, probably.
Alright, so, so my thinking on this is that this board historically is, I, I think has not waived things like this. And quite frankly, I'm, I, I, I'm a little concerned about doing that, you know, and then getting yelled at by someone in the building because we're giving away money. Um, so I, I'm reluctant to do, to, to waive that fee. Um, you know, if somebody comes back to me and says, wow, it's, you know, a hundred thousand dollars or something like that and it has an impact, then tell me that.
It has a hundred, it's a hundred thousand.
But, you know, I, I'm, I'm reluctant to waive it. So I guess, I guess my position is make the case that it makes it uneconomic, which is what you'd have to do anyways.
I don't think we can.
Yeah, okay. Alright, then, then this is a no. Alright.
Okay, so, um, when do we pay that fee?
And how much?
You tell us.
I'll figure it out.
Well, yeah, we'll figure it out. Um, alright, so administrative permits, I, I think that one's okay, section five.
Yep, you just become the authority.
Yep, and then we move on to section one of the wetland protection. Another fee. I wrote okay next to this one.
So did I.
But I, but I also wrote how much. I, I'm, but I'm going back to what, I, I'm, I'm, I'm saying no, and let's make the case for why we have to do it. Regulations governing stormwater, um, so section three administration, I think we're okay on that, then another waiver of fees. Um, I'm, I'm going, I, I don't think we want to do that, so. Um, again, let's, you know, come back to us and make the case and, and, you know, tell us we waived it for other projects or.
At the beginning with conservation, did they make a comment? Does anybody remember? You know, on this?
I'm not aware that they did.
Okay, now, now we get into the new stuff, subdivision rules and regs. You want to lead us through these?
Sure. Okay, so, um, it's possible by definition, section, uh, four point one, point four, point two pavement width. You could argue that the, the driveways throughout this project could be deemed as, they could relate. If anything was going to relate to this project to a subdivision, you could argue that the, the drive aisles would be the definition of a minor street, which by definition requires thirty feet minimum. So, uh, we're proposing twenty-four feet of pavement. The standard drive aisle dimensions. We are, we do have more than twenty-four in this main drive aisle. Now, this is, this is thirty, but all these other, you know, traditional drive aisles are twenty-four.
Yeah, I'm.
I don't know how you feel about the, you know, I don't know if I'm making it, I just didn't want to exclude it and then have it come back and bite us.
Yeah, no, I understand. I'm, I'm okay with that.
We know at this point that fire, the turning analysis and all that stuff has been completed and reviewed by traffic professional side.
Okay.
Uh, next, section four point one, point five, point two, max centile grade. Uh, it actually says for multifamily area on a minor street, the maximum centile grade should be four percent. We actually. For us, a little smidgen of area coming up out of here, we're four and a half.
Okay, and that's actually going down into the project.
Yep, it actually comes uphill onto Pleasant and downhill from Pleasant.
Yeah, and, and you're saying at the project entrance, so I think that's fine.
Yep. Yeah, that's the only place, exactly. Uh, so this is, the next one is similar, four point one, point five, point six, the leveling area. Subdivision roads typically have a leveling area, which means the area that you're approaching a stop sign or an intersection. It can either be downhill or uphill, but it's a leveling area, uh, has a maximum grade of three percent. Because, because we're at four and a half percent in this area, it's the same situation, it's just four and a half percent. But it's not a subdivision road where you're presumably driving up to thirty miles an hour and then approaching an intersection.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I don't, I don't have an appreciation for just how much four, four and a half percent is. I mean, is, is there any concern about cars being stuck there trying to get out in the snowstorm or whatever? I mean, I don't, is, is four percent a lot? I don't know.
No, so for context, if you're over five percent on a handicap ramp, you need hand railings. A handicap ramp that you see with handrails is eight point three, three percent.
Oh, wow.
Okay.
It's not much, but great.
Alright, so it's not much at all, okay, alright. Seems reasonable.
Yep, I would agree. Uh, four point five, point one, protection of natural features. Uh, due regard should be shown for all natural features such as trees, wooded areas, watercourses, scenic points, et cetera. Uh, any clearing, backfilling, cutting, thinning, or other disturbance of trees twelve inches or over in diameter, measured four feet above finished ground, located within the street right of way, and the minimum front setback should be prohibited unless deemed proper by the board and not in conflict or contradiction to the intent of section four point nine, point one. Any such proposed clearing should be shown on the plan and written reasons therefore may be requested by the board. Again, I don't know if this would be applicable, it talks about street right of ways, we're not in street right of ways. Uh, but a waiver to allow the clearing to occur is shown on the approved plan set, which is relatively little because the nature of the site is, you know, predominantly agricultural field, but again, felt like I had to include it as opposed to having it bite us.
Yep, so, uh, the only thing that, my comment is, you know, uh, apprentice, we actually went on site and went through what was being taken down, um, with the landscape review and the, the nature of that project and this are quite different. Uh, the issues are quite different, but, I mean, is there, you know, it, I guess, you know, I'd need to see an existing conditions, uh, print, you know, you know, on the boundaries, are there major trees that we should be working to protect, or, you know, anything along those lines?
Yeah, so, you know, that's, that's a good question. So, you know, there are trees along this common boundary line with the butters along Peter's Way, those are being preserved because, you know, we're staying away and plus we're constructing the berm. Um, there are trees in this twenty-five foot drainage movement. In fact, if you walked it, you would never know there was a drainage movement there, because if they had to actually access, they couldn't, they actually can't access their drainage movement. So as part of the work, we're going to do that clearing so they can access their drainage movement from Pleasant Street. Because today they could not, they couldn't do it, they couldn't physically do it unless on foot. Um, and then the only other remaining trees, um, that are beyond the extent of the agricultural field are about, you know, pretty much these buildings in the storm, you know, the stormwater basins, but then these, the back half from these buildings down. You know, the whole front.
So, so, and then will that be documented on a print somewhere? So existing conditions and what, what's?
Yeah, I mean, it's an existing conditions plan, it's part of our plan set, it doesn't show individual trees, it shows the, you know, the surveyed tree line, the tree canopy line. Um, don't know if you find that to be satisfactory.
I think what we want to prevent is, you know, I, I think the, the tree preservation of trees along the Peter's Way boundary is probably the, the biggest concern. So somehow we just want to make sure that we, somehow we're protecting that and.
Well, there's a limited work on the plan.
Is, is there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, and so we, which may, may or may not protect, if there's any mature trees in there, I, I, we don't have to survey the trees.
Yeah.
Do you need, I mean, can you, can you move that limit of work any further in? It doesn't seem like you're doing any work within twenty-five feet of that property line, can you move the limit of work?
I mean, we're construct, I mean, the Peter's Way property line?
Yeah.
I mean, we're constructing the berm to the edge of the existing tree canopy. On sheet five point zero.
What plan sheet are you looking at?
Five point zero?
Five point zero, C, five point zero?
And then the berm will be planted, of course. So there's a variety of trees along that, you know, of, of species of trees along that, there's some tall white pines, there's some, you know, hardwood, you know, maple varieties. None of those are proposed to be removed, we're just going to construct the berm.
So, so I'm, I'm, I'm good with all that, except what we're, what we're saying is waiver to allow clearing to occur is shown on the approved plan set, but the approved plan set really isn't showing anything, so maybe what we need to do is, is, we have to, maybe there has to be a plan that talks about, and, and maybe it's isolated to that, you know, that Peter's Way.
Maybe it's wording, no, no vegetation is removed along the boundary line of the butters of Peter's Way.
I mean, you know, or.
Well, there is a limited work line, so.
Yeah, it's got to be an edge of clearing.
That could be in the edge of clearing.
Yeah, yeah, great.
Is that enough?
But, but like you just said, we don't know if that's enough, without.
We just don't know where the mature trees are.
Right.
So that, I think in, in other cases, we've had them go out and survey at least some trees.
Right, I think that's, that's.
Or we should stake the limit of work, that might be, be easier, because then you can physically see the limit of work.
That might be easier.
If I show you a plan with individual trees, you're gonna, it's gonna look like I sneezed on it.
Well, you'd be, you'd be surprised what our spray's look like.
Yeah, well, it's not every tree, two, two inches or larger.
What are, what are we worrying about, though?
Uh, I, I just want to protect that, you know, if, if the intention is that a, a lot of trees are being preserved, and this is, oh, you weren't here for Prentice. So it's just, you know, the intention is, there's a lot of trees preserved along Peter's Way, I want to ensure they're preserved. Right, and this is the same thing we had at, at Prentice, um, like, Matthew circled behind that, we want to make sure that as many trees as possible were preserved. So that's the only thing, and I think what Steve just proposed, yeah, I think if you, if you were to stake the limit of work, and then you can kind of go out there and see, alright, that's well out of range of all the, the mature trees that were of interest, and I think that would work, yeah.
Yeah, I think you'll be satisfied to see that those trees are, they'll be outside the limit of work.
So, so I think this waiver is okay, subject to, um, staking and then notifying us of the limit of work.
Do you want them to do that now, before the next session, or is it a post-permit thing?
No, I think you, you can do that now, right?
Yep, absolutely.
Do you guys go out there?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Yep, we'll do it, we'll notify you.
Because if it's not, right, and then we, we still have time to actually take some other action.
Yeah.
Make more, something more detailed, or.
If there's any, any big trees there anyways, they should be right up against the wall, because they were using it as a field, so they would have cut them down years ago.
Yeah, that's correct.
Good point.
And you know, the only trouble with a, with your tree, it's a stick for thirty feet, then you have the canopy, you're better off with brush.
No, I, I, I understand.
Screening.
And we see that, and I, I, I get it, but.
You know, you got a big stick thirty feet tall.
Peter's point, in your landscape plan, does that take that into consideration on the trees that you're putting in?
Yes.
With the fire department, as, you know, Peter's point, eventually you get a big ball on top of it. I just, you know, I think you should look closely at that.
The constructed, the height of the constructed berm and then the plantings on top of the berm fill that void.
I'm, I'm thinking more in the, in the inner, the inner circle as far as the trees that you put in.
Oh.
Don't put in anything that will develop a canopy that can impede the turning radius of a fire truck.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah, no, absolutely, yeah, those are, those are parking lot tree species for that reason, yeah.
Okay, four, seven, one, three, utility location and placement. Um, waiver request, you know, due to multifamily nature, I, I think that's fine. Um, you basically were saying that, you know, other structures shall be installed to a point minimum two feet outside the back edge of the sidewalk, it's just not practical in, in a multifamily, so I think that's okay.
On, just on that one, Bill, I, I, did you, I don't know if you guys, um, focused on this, but is, is there going to be a transformer in the front at the end of, um, building one hundred?
Yep, that's what we anticipate, and the landscape.
Is that going to be screened at all?
Yeah, the landscape plan should, should show it screened.
Because that's really a very prominent location, as you're driving into the project, you're looking at a transformer right there.
Yeah, you know, sometimes you're at the mercy of the utility company as well, but, so, yeah, if that's screened, the landscape plan, one, L one point zero shows that.
Yeah, okay.
Can you show that on, or just point?
Yeah, so it actually does show up a little bit here. So right on this corner, there'll be a transformer, and then there's the vegetation, you know, right around it.
Is that what they've agreed, where they've agreed to put it? Hopefully?
No.
No.
Uh, national grid works to a different.
Yeah.
Beat, um, and, and I believe the decision refers to the electrical plans being submitted prior to, after they figure out what they're, how they're going to design the place, that we bring it to, I believe, the building inspector, but Dan, Dan might know. There, there's a little bit of that as well in there, so, I'm, I'm kind of at their mercy.
I mean, we, we, we can make predictions based on history.
Yeah.
Um, that's the best we can do.
And I, and I, and I don't want to look at it, and of course, by safety, if I have to do ballards around it, I have to do ballards, but still, I, I'd like to try to put it in a less
Yeah.
intrusive spot.
A little lipstick on it, you know?
Yeah, exactly.
Like the cell phone, the cell towers, it look like, supposed to look like trees, but they don't.
Oh, yeah.
Alright, um, four, seven, six, lighting, uh, basically, um, there's some details of what's typically required. You want a waiver requested, waiver requested to provide lighting is shown on the approved plan set.
Yeah, otherwise it's three hundred feet intervals and in sections, but that's not applicable.
Yep, okay, culverts and storm drains, you want to use plastic pipe instead of concrete pipe.
Yep, this is one that we actually talked about.
Yep.
Would promulgate this.
Putting air conditioning in the units?
Yes.
It's an inside joke, Peter knows.
What's that?
I asked, I asked if they were putting air conditioning in the units.
Yeah.
We had a, we had a, a project that, um, changed it to plastic pipe without telling us, and.
Is Jeff?
And we caught them.
Is Jeff in agreement with that?
Yeah, because the plan that he approved, oh, I've always shown HDP.
Yep, I, I think that's fine. Alright, and then, um, culverts and storm drains, wherever across all the minimum two feet cover. So this is another one that's already been through Jeff?
Yep, nothing's changed, the cover over the pipes.
Two feet's okay?
Yeah, especially for H, HDP.
On, on that, okay.
Street lights. So again, deferring to, street and pedestrian light shall be installed to conform to the type and style specified. Really, that's, that's what it says, huh? Um, so, yeah, oh, these are streetlights, does that even apply?
I didn't want to, I didn't want to pass it over and then.
Yeah, you know, I, I was the, the streetlight zah for a while, and, uh, I'm serious, I was, for years, for years, well, that's what they call me. And, well, the select board has to have one member that does, uh, the, the streetlight stuff, and, uh, I was it for a bunch of years, and I never did a, an apartment complex.
Yeah, no.
I, I did it, street, brand new streets and problems with existing streets, but.
You had dogs at one point too, didn't you?
No, no, that was Carlson.
If you tell me to remove it, I'm happy to remove it, but I, you know, where I'm coming from.
Do you have a detail in here on the streetlights, or?
Yes, so actually, I think on the eight, on the August first plans, those, which unfortunately, I'm sorry, you haven't seen, I guess, have.
Streetlights have to be.
Have a lighting plan with the detail.
Streetlight on the street has to be approved.
Yes.
And the poll. Alright, so, so that'll be in the next set you give us?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I know, I don't know if we need to have the waiver or just strike it entirely.
It has to be approved, the streetlights on the street have to be approved by the select.
But they're not putting.
You're not having anything.
Inside. This is inside, I, I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I would think that's covered under four, seven, six, lighting. Which, you know, basically we said approved lighting is shown on the plan.
Yeah, we need to see the plan first, though, we don't have it.
Oh, sure.
Is this low intensity lighting or whatever you call it?
Yep, full cutoff, dark sky compliant, you know, no, 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 no lights spilled over property lines. There's not, there's really not, there's no other standard these days, but, yeah.
Oh, that's a, a written standard that you have to go by, or do we need to put that in as a condition?
Uh, you actually have a dark sky compliant condition.
I think they're going to give us a plan sheet for the next meeting, and that's going to show, there're going to be specs that'll show these things.
Okay.
And we'll just sign off on that.
If it's easy, just to leave them and, and make sure we're covered, I'm, I'm okay leaving it, um, I'm also okay striking it, so. Might as well just leave it. Oh, and that's it.
So do you want to have Jeff look at this?
Absolutely.
Between now and then?
Yeah.
Yes, and Jeff had, this has been provided from Jeff.
He didn't get back to you on this, though, right?
No, I don't recall that he did, I'm going to make a note to.
One question, without looking at the plans, seeing where our waivers, you're doing granite carbon?
Yes.
Concrete walks?
Just from a operation and maintenance standpoint?
No, no, I just.
Attractiveness, yeah.
Alright, um, next up would be, um, conditions. And, uh, Dan and, um, Steve have been working on this, and, Dan, you want to lead us through these, or?
Sure.
Draw our attention to, you know, I, I suspect a lot of this is below their plate, and, first of all, we're all seeing this for the first time, the board. So this is the first time we're seeing it, um.
Can I plug into this? Is that?
Oh, I was going to share, but.
There's no way for me to plug in.
I, I don't know, it's beyond my.
Do you have an HDMI?
It's about my pay rate.
I think I've done this before.
Dan, Dan, the only problem is then all the, uh, people on Zoom will be knocked off. So can you share your computer?
Yep.
Alright, share your computer.
I gotta go into Zoom first.
Okay, that's the way to do it.
Okay.
Okay.
Am I minted, Steve?
I have some things. Different color.
Oh, okay.
So actually, while we're waiting for Dan to do that, there's three questions in the Q and A. Are those questions or those hands up?
Those were from before we started. They thought we were just muted, but we hadn't called order.
So those have all been answered?
Yes.
Okay.
Just a procedural thing.
Sure.
For future meetings, could you post the packet online before the meeting so we can see it? It's really hard. We have no way of following it. It's really difficult to follow on there.
Sure. But this one we just got tonight, and I think even waivers we just got, do we have that ahead of time? We did have that.
The waivers were posted on the webpage, and I have the, I have this up on the webpage now too, the draft.
Yeah, but that just happened tonight.
Right.
Yeah. I think Katrina, you know, sir, to answer your question, I think Katrina's pretty good about getting this stuff up onto the website ahead of time. We don't do a packet like the select board does, but the materials are generally up on the website. And Katrina usually does a pretty good job of that. She's on vacation. Amber's, you know, doing as much as she can, but it sounded like everything was up there except for the, the conditions, which we're about to talk about, which we just got tonight ourselves.
It's hard to know what's going to be...
I'm, yep.
It's a list of all the things not associated with the meeting, so it's hard to tell what's going to be covered and what's not covered.
Understood. Yeah.
Looks like the fee for the wetland bylaw would be like...
Be the host.
Hundred bucks.
Can you enable?
Maybe 200 bucks. Not, not...
I think we can...
Not feasible. So we're not worth arguing about it. Strike that from the next project's waiver request.
As I was about to say, we wasted more money talking about it.
Exactly.
Well, you're trying to save him a buck, Steve. Nothing wrong with that.
All right, I'm ready.
Okay.
So I will say that 90% of this is, is the same condition, are the same conditions as Prentice Place. I'm assuming the boilerplate, you'd rather just skip through and focus on the changes.
Right, right, exactly. I think we can review the bulk of this document. Yeah, if you could just take us to the areas that we need to discuss.
Okay, so A2 is a placeholder. If there's any conditions that we want to add based upon something that Jeff recommends, that, like a change to a plan that we're not insisting on happening before the close of the hearing, we'll stick that in A2. Most of Section A is a, is boilerplate. We've got the list of plans. A11 is basically, you have to comply, you have to build this project in accordance with the plans that were submitted, that were finally approved. So after we get the final plans from Steve, we'll plug in the final plan dates, plan sheets, anything else we're missing, we should fill in there. I'm going to have Jeff review this obviously as well and make sure I didn't miss anything for the documents that were submitted. A12, I don't know if this is relevant, but are there any three-bedroom units, or what is?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. All right, so we could limit the number of three-bedroom units if that was of a concern to you folks. I don't know if actually that was negotiated with the select board, the number of bedrooms.
So, so I think you had, you know, you have a document. Matt, are you getting up to talk about this?
Yeah. If you're all right?
Yeah, come on.
Just quickly. Yeah, I didn't quite...
Name me that.
I didn't quite understand. Matt Ofton, 79, Old Westboro. So we asked them to put in more three-bedroom units, or we asked them to put in three-bedroom units because they didn't originally have any. The reason that we asked them for those was that that was the greatest need expressed in the housing production plan for the Affordable Housing Trust. So I can understand that you don't want 50% three-bedroom, but it's a very modest amount.
Yeah.
I don't even know if it gets to 10%.
Where I always had it was, Clay had a matrix of, you know, X number, ones, twos, threes, affordable's not, and then the whole 60% and 50...
50 and 80.
And 60, 50, and 80 for the, so I don't know where that gets plugged in here.
Well, I saw that matrix, but I didn't, is, do you have a matrix somewhere of all the units?
Yeah, for the breakdowns.
Yeah.
I don't think it made it into this, but I do have one. For reference, we have 12 three-bedroom units, so 10% of 104 would be 10, so there's two extra. And as Matt alluded to, that was one of the biggest needs from the Affordable Housing Trust and your housing production plan.
Right, right.
So does this board want to put a condition at all on what the breakdown is of the number of bedrooms in the units? Or do you want to just leave it up to him, up to them to decide how to do it?
No, I, I think we do. I, I, I don't know. I'm thinking I want them to build what they have in that matrix, and they certainly have to on the affordable side.
So I guess, yeah, where is that? Because we need to reference that.
So my, the matrix for the affordable units was in the draft that I sent.
Yeah, not that. I've got that one.
Oh, okay.
So the, for all, for all 104 units.
Okay.
Is there a breakdown table?
We can definitely provide it to you.
It'd be great if you could put that up.
It's in the, it's in the application.
I think it's in the application, but yeah, we can, yeah.
It is, yeah. I know we have 12 three-bedrooms that got memorized, but let me pull that up.
Why don't you just send that to me?
Yeah, send it to me. Doing it now doesn't help.
Yeah, right.
You're looking for it, we'll give it to you.
Yep.
You know the number of three bedrooms.
Yep.
And then there's... Yeah, because I think on the Prentice Place decision, Dan, this said no, no...
No more than one.
More.
Right.
So I think, I think I might have changed it to no less, but then you changed it back to no more because I think...
Well, usually...
Makes sense now.
Most towns don't want them.
But there are, there are DHCD or EO, LHC, right, requirements, no less.
Yeah, has to be 10.
Has to be 10, yeah.
Okay.
This must be.
So, but somewhere in, I don't know if it's A12, but somewhere we're actually going to put a breakdown. There's many ones, there's many twos, there's many threes.
I'll stick it in here once I get it.
All right, got it, okay.
Okay.
Well, just, there's nine mark, three-bedroom market rate in...
Three affordable.
Three affordable.
Three affordable.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, I want, I think, we definitely need to get the affordable breakdown in there. And it's not just three affordables, I think at least one of them is a 50 or 60 percenter, isn't it?
Right.
One at each.
One three-bedroom, 50, one, yep, one at each.
One 50, 60, and 80.
Okay, so you know, I think we want all of that to be...
There's a whole table right there.
Yeah, yeah, so that's what I'm saying. We want all, we want that in all, all of that. Okay.
Okay, so I'm just skipping ahead to site development construction conditions.
What page was it?
What section?
What section?
Section C.
Okay.
And Steve, just stop me if, if I took something out that you wanted in, or if there's something in here that...
To talk about.
That you didn't like. I think I captured, I tried to capture all the strikeouts, so you had some strikeouts of things you didn't like.
Yeah, I knew you'd see those on track, track changes.
Yeah.
Yes, it looks like you commented, which is perfect, we'll just...
But if I miss something, just flag it. Hours of operation, this is what we did in Prentice, I'm assuming that hasn't changed in town.
So, so Dan, we had a problem, and you're well aware of down at, is it Fisherville? Behind the St. James Church. Do we have the, with respect to, 7 o'clock means nobody shows up before 7 o'clock, and there was, you know, some confusion here, so... I thought we talked about some better language. We might have even, in the changes we did for that, we put some better language in, but...
Yeah, we might have.
I'm going to make a note here. I'll see if I can find the language as well, but I think we want to make sure we have it a little bit more crystal clear in case there's any doubt about 7 o'clock means 7 o'clock.
Yeah, I think, Bill, to your point, on that, C7, on Saturday's construction shall be limited to 8 to 5, which, you know, means that you can't be on the site till 8.
And just, you know...
We ran into a problem there.
Right, so Chad, for your benefit, what, down at Fisherville, they were showing up at 6:15, maybe even earlier.
Yes.
With their trucks.
Yeah.
Right, and to make it even worse, it was when they were clearing the land, they had a tractor trailer that was backing uphill at 6:15 in the morning, and there was a house, you know, 100 feet away. So, you know, beep, 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 and then he didn't get it. I watched this. He didn't get it right the first time, he did it two more times.
I think, I...
So, you know, the idea is, the idea is nobody should be showing up on the site before 7 o'clock. That's the issue.
I think, I think the big thing is sometimes, I do like how it's written. Actually, you do have a pretty decent way it's written here because the only times we run into problems with other towns is sometimes when the fuel truck is there, you know, or the guys come in to grease the machines before to start at 7. No machines are supposed to start until 7. But sometimes guys show up at 6:45 to grease, you know, their machines and stuff. So that's the only thing we have. There's not, nothing at 6:15 or anything should ever happen. So it's typically any start of construction of making noise is at 7 o'clock.
And I think what we're, where we're going to head here, because of what happened at Fisherville, is nobody's on site before 7 o'clock. So that's different than what you're saying.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of, yeah, that's tough.
Yeah, but this is a residential neighborhood, right? And, and I think we have to be very respectful of the fact that you've got houses right there, so, you know, I, I'm going to be leaning towards, you know, trying to get the language in that we ended up putting in for Fisherville, just to avoid the exact situation we had at Fisherville.
I think we should tweak the state and federal holidays too. There's so many state and federal holidays, the construction work will go broke with them. I mean, Juneteenth is a federal holiday now. Everybody works that. Everybody works Martin Luther King Day. I don't know how we write something in, but... Which one in April is Patriots' Day, is a state holiday, that's...
Have we ever specifically laid out the exact holiday?
I think we should, I think we should just write down the big five.
You could limit it, yeah. I mean, federal holiday is, there's a list, so that's...
Fourth of July, Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Year's.
Memorial Day.
Memorial Day.
Labor Day.
And half of them, people are there on Sundays anyways, but if they don't make noise, nobody complains.
Well, that's the thing, right?
I mean, that was what was wrong down in South Craft.
Absolutely.
Everybody was upset anyways because they just irritated everybody from the beginning. And then wouldn't listen.
Yeah, so I mean, you know, if somebody wants to go over the list, I'll, you know, go for it, but, so, so my initial thought is, as you're saying this is, well, yeah, I get it. You know, perhaps people do work on, you know, Patriots' Day, but it is a day off from school and, and, you know, and there'll be some parents who will be taking the day off to, because their kids are off, and, you know, do they have, you know, you know, should we be treating that as a holiday, and they should be able to not have to deal with construction going on in their backyard? So I, I don't know. I, you know, I could go either way on that, to be honest. But I think we have to be, this is a residential neighborhood, we have to be respectful of that. We really, you know, at least I want to try and be respectful of it.
What's the norm in other towns or other areas?
Typically, 7 o'clock starting the machines. You know, if you're, if you're going to drive...
You're back on a different issue.
Oh, yeah. I'm still stuck, quite honestly, I'm still stuck on that one.
Give us 18 minutes.
I, I, I'm trying to remember what we did and what we just did and, and off of, you know, in our last development, so I, I... I mean, we have a number of them off as well, but I'm not too sure. I think we work Martin Luther King and Patriots' Day, I think we do.
Yeah, we work Patriots' Day.
Labor Day, Memorial Day.
Somebody wants to go over the list.
There's probably, there's probably three, there's probably like three, maybe, you know, that might be the rogue ones out there. We'll get that to you.
The big ones we generally have off, like you said.
I guess my thinking is if the, if the schools are off in town, that we probably should, you know, include that, and I don't know, are the schools off on Juneteenth?
Yeah, it's a federal holiday.
Like Election Day?
That's federal.
Their schools are off.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, Election Day.
I, I, again, all right, let's move on. If somebody wants to go over the list, let's talk about it.
School goes until mid-July and starts in mid-August nowadays.
All right.
All right, I just want to make sure we didn't miss anything from Steve.
Just C7.
This is Steve's version right here.
Not to go too far backwards, but...
What's the, what's the yellow indicate? It's deleted?
No, the yellow is for you to pay attention to it.
Oh.
Because it's like new language that I came up with that I want to talk about.
What's the pink for?
Pink?
Pink.
We have some pink in here.
I think those are probably comments.
Yeah.
Oh, comments, yeah.
Yeah, it indicates there's a comment in the border.
No, no, the whole, oh, okay, all right, all right.
So Steve, I don't think there's anything in A through C that I missed, but...
There was something, there was a paragraph we wanted to strike in, I guess it's B, it's Paragraph G.
What page?
Wait, where are you?
Page four.
I'm going to use your page number.
He's scrolling so fast over there, I can't read that fast.
Page four. On the document you passed out, Dan, page four.
Yeah, it's on my screen.
Wait, I'm confused. I don't see that on page four.
Well, because he has the...
He struck it.
I have, I have Steve's version up right now, but Steve wants to take out G. I left that in, didn't I?
Yeah. What section is it in?
B.
It's on page four, H.
B1.
Oh.
Section at the top of page four.
Like, I guess what would be the timing of, I mean, I, I feel like at the time, time has evolved so much with 40B projects, you would, you know, it's common for ZBAs to approve 40Bs before they saw a lot of the information, but the conditions covered them. Are there architectural drawings that you haven't seen that you would, you know, feel like you need to see? Is that...
Yeah, that's a good point. I think this was particularly important with Prentice.
Yeah.
I don't know if the board cares as much about the architectural drawings for this project. They will be submitted with a building permit application, so that, that's typically when you get really detailed elevations and floor plans.
And that is later in the decision, you know, with no problem with that one.
But that comes much later in the process.
I, I think where I probably made him strike that one was when I took the Elmarock one, I was resubmitting things that were possibly maybe already submitted, but I know in this case, we've, we've shown you plans with elevations and things that require it. But then again, when I fault, dude, and that was just pre-construction, again, it's submission, pre-construction submission, so before I actually break, start to clear this, I'm submitting the drawings, we kind of already reviewed those drawings, you know, here, so I'm just, you know...
Okay, I, I...
I'm just eliminating that, and then, then, then I'm, once the drawings are done for the building permits, then I'm resubmitting everything once again, but I, you know.
But we don't necessarily see that.
Yeah.
We, we don't necessarily see what, what, we don't, no, we don't necessarily see, we also, we do not see what gets submitted for the building permit. But how do we know that what is being submitted for the building permit is what we talked about here? Right, I thought that was kind of what, what that step was about, and I don't, won't we usually actually send those to Jeff? I mean...
No, I mean, we, the, the current architectural plans are in the record, and they have to build in accordance with those plans. So if they deviate from those, then they have to come back to us for a modification.
Okay.
So this, this was in here, probably because we are, I think, a little more concerned about architecture at Prentice.
Yeah. Okay.
And I don't even want, don't want flat roofs, so...
So if you're okay with the current architectural plans, probably just take this out.
Yeah, okay, I, 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 sure, but what's the downside to having to do this? Because you, you have to, it's not like you don't, we're making you create something you don't have to create otherwise.
It's the timing, they're saying they don't...
So tell me again about the timing?
Well, I think the timing is then I have to come in front of your board before I start to clear with just the elevations that I just showed you in this set, to say, this is what I'm gonna do before I start to cut down the trees. It's more or less like a, a pre-construction meeting, more or less, which I think you, you... There's a member of the ZBA at pre-construction, so then you would, I would have the architecturals anyways rendering to where we could do it at that time, regardless of...
All right.
Yeah.
All right, okay, that's fine.
So you want to take it out?
I'm okay with taking it out.
Everyone else?
Huh?
Is everyone else on, okay?
Yeah.
I, I don't think there's an issue.
Yeah.
I mean, it will be validated that, you know, they ultimately look like this, you know, which is, I think, in ten, right?
Yes.
Because even the requirement for a pre-construction meeting, that information is shared and disclosed, so... Is that 3D though, that, which building is that, which building type?
That one is...
That's a big building.
Yeah, it is.
Two's and three, two and three, yeah, two ones and the other pond, probably, that one, yeah.
Do you want to ask for that sketchup, is that a sketchup? Do you want to ask?
Yeah, the architectural rendering.
Do you want to ask for that for the other three here?
I think we've seen it.
Aren't they all gonna be the same?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a...
That's not just one building, that's all of them.
The footprint is bigger, but the roof style is...
It's the same.
Yeah.
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 And we, we've talked about this with the dark, or faux roof, not, not the parapet, but the below that.
We did a section of front elevation, then we have a 3D kind of rendering of what the buildings would look like, yeah.
There was the, before we got this one, there was another one.
That's correct.
I think that's the one where we would want to reference.
Front elevation one, yeah, yeah.
Right.
But there's no change in the design, all buildings are gonna have that same.
Right.
Just different size.
Slightly different.
Yeah, right.
Probably only two sizes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
These three other, I think, and then this one, a little bit bigger, because that, uh, well, there'll be three bedrooms and...
One and two.
Ones and twos and the smaller bit, yes, yeah.
So can we just reference that prior architectural drawing? Or something to that effect?
That one?
Yeah.
Not this one specifically, there was a...
The previous.
Previous one, this was just a more detailed view of the roof.
I believe it is.
Will it be in the plan?
All of the plans that have been submitted are documented in the decision.
All right, so it's already?
Yep, just like the second one. Okay, so I think we've closed out A and B, we'll go back down to C. We've talked about the hours in C7. So C19 does have a condition on the boundaries of, of the limited works that we flagged on the site, uh, prior to any site development activities. The applicant then must get Jeff's confirmation that the flags are properly located, and then the applicant must install a physical barrier along, excuse me, along the limited work boundary. Actually, we gotta take this out, it's not just the western boundary, it's all of it, right?
Yeah, I, I would think it's all of it, yeah.
Yep. I think, yeah, Prentice, we're concerned about one particular one.
Yeah, the western boundary here is Pleasant Street.
All right, um, driveway and parking lot design, I just had a note here that I don't, I, I wasn't sure if the driveway is, is meeting that planning board's...
Yes, it is.
Thickness standard, does it?
Yep, gravel and pavement thicknesses, yep. And, yeah, the details that show that are already on the plans too, so that's done.
Retaining walls that are visible from abutting properties or public ways shall be, uh, field stone, um, is that...
So there's, there's a retaining wall, uh, it's relatively short, that goes from here to behind here, and then ties in, and that's to respect the drainage usement, not make grading alterations in the grading, in the drainage usement.
Yeah. I mean, this clearly was a Prentice one, um, you know, I...
I guess, what's, uh...
We've used this quite a bit in other projects too, it's, it's, it's aesthetics, you know, it's particularly important when scenic roads and...
That one's not gonna be visible from abutting properties.
Not really, no.
Not in the way that I interpret it, but if, if someone was reading the, the words on paper, and said, oh, I can stand here and see that wall. It's like, wait a minute, that's not what the intention was, that's what I'm, that's where I'm coming from.
So there's no walls in the front?
No, no, no retaining walls. It, it, it might, there, there could be some decorative landscape.
Because it all kinda goes down.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it would only, it, it would, I think I said it during the last meeting, the, the only possible chance of a, a wall might be a little entranceway wall with the, 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 the name of the place on it, that, and I would, of course, want a field stone anyway, so... It's just that other wall's not... It's an expensive wall to, for the deer to look at.
Uh, I'm okay with striking it, I mean, I, you know, um...
Plus, the wall out front wouldn't be a retaining wall.
Yeah.
The only real retaining wall is the one that we're talking about.
Yeah, if we were doing a large block retaining wall, I sure as heck wouldn't want to see it on, you know...
Yeah.
All right, so now we're on section D, open space and wetland protection. So I, I have a, an open space buffer, uh, condition here, um, that we can play with. Uh, basically, the way I drafted it was that it would be an open space buffer of twenty-five feet depth, because I think you guys are gonna meet that, and I put an exception for the drainage structures that are, that are shown in the plan that are within twenty-five feet. Um, that just simply means you can't put any structure within twenty-five feet of a property line.
Oh, of the property line or wetlands?
The property line, the perimeter of the property.
Okay, you're on D1?
D4.
Oh, okay, so we, we talked about D1?
Sure.
We have no wetland alteration, therefore we have no wetland replication? Do we need this paragraph, was this Prentice place specific? I don't...
Yeah, there's no replication.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm not familiar enough with that job to know if there was wetlands.
We striking that?
D1.
Yeah. Then come up.
Is, is there any wetlands monitoring or compliance that, some, referring to the last sentence of that section?
That was in reference to, um...
Replication.
Replication.
Yeah, so, so there is nothing to do there then, okay.
And they have an order of conditions anyway for...
Yep.
For work.
Okay, so...
Okay, so going, D4 was an open, I, I have an open space buffer, uh, we've done these in the past.
Is the buffer from the, on the frontage of Pleasant, is, can you look at it that way, because I'll have electric utilities?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's brush.
Technically.
There's brush and dead trees.
Just along the front edge, Dan, I, I know what you, where you were going with it, but if the whole perimeter, the frontage on Pleasant Street would be the perimeter also, right?
Right, but what do you, so you have some electrical utilities?
Yeah, you have, I think you have drainage, I think the sewer would be in that twenty-five foot, you know, the twenty-five feet, feet from the right of way of Pleasant Street into our property, that would kinda be your buffer, I, I believe, the way I read it anyways.
Yeah, I, I meant above-ground utilities, are these, are these underground or?
Yeah. Oh, oh, this is above-ground utilities?
That's what I intended.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Because I think, the, the point is to keep it in a natural state.
Oh, okay.
So why don't I just make that note?
Okay.
But it says no driveways, you got a driveway going right through the front, so that can't...
Yeah, that should be an exception too. Would a nice, small stone wall entrance sign be in violation of this?
Let's, let's add an exception, so there's no question for, for a sign.
Yeah, that's fine.
A driveway and a sign, but the rest of it's supposed to be a nice buffer and just be done.
Bus shelter.
Is there a bus shelter?
Yeah, that's out there too.
Is that twenty-five feet? It's close, I don't know exactly twenty-five feet.
Sidewalk, too.
I mean, could we say except for the western boundary?
Yeah, there you go.
That might be better.
That might be better, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
All right, and then D5, uh, Steve, you actually, uh, increased those distances, right, from the language we had in Prentice? Which I, I'm assuming is consistent with the order of conditions?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. On D7, I, you didn't object to this, but I just wanted to make sure you're in agreement with it, because I don't know if that...
Well, I did highlight it for discussion on the, 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 the one I brought with me, so, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think you really have what we intend on, what, what, at least I, I think of usable open space, um, so I, I...
Because I think this definitely would apply to a different standard than Prentice, because, you know, when you're gonna donate almost five acres of land, you know, what's considered open space in the development area?
Yeah, I would probably just take this out.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
But that does bring up a question I had on that rec area that you have shown there, um, that, there's no detail anywhere, like on your landscaping plan as to what you're proposing, so... I don't know if the board wants to see something like that, I mean, is it a field, is it a... I don't know the answer.
It's probably a, a small playground area, for, very, very small.
I mean...
Just like you asked, how, how big is it?
Where is it?
The bottom.
Bottom right? Oh.
It's a hundred feet by forty feet.
Pretty big, swing set, swing set, sort of slide?
Yeah, just a little bit of playfield, you know, to frisbee or what, whatnot down there.
So, you know, I...
Wouldn't be bad, because the, the nature trail where, you know, visitors did want to come and use the trails, at least that amenity is kinda open to, you know, the public as well. But it's yet to be defined as of right now.
It, it's up to you, you don't have to regulate this, but you could if you wanted to.
Well, that's on the plan, so it's supposed to get built, right?
But it's not, we don't, we don't know what it is, they may not do anything there, they might just mow it.
Right, I think that's okay. I don't know, I, I, I think that's okay, we're not, we haven't gone as far as to say we want them to put in a...
Pickleball court.
Right, or, or even playground equipment, right, I mean...
Yeah, I, I haven't honestly reviewed it either, at, at this stage.
I think the important thing was just some sort of a open space.
Yep, yeah.
Should we have a sign that says play area or something, or, so people know what it is?
No, I think...
I mean, that's the only, I'm not big on signs, but, uh...
Mr. Goleman's?
You know, I think, you know, High Point, there's a, in that pocket, there's a desert, but, you know...
That's, that's got equipment up there, that's got...
Yeah, but they, there's no signage or anything in there.
Think about Hilltop, right?
Yeah, yeah, Hilltop, excuse me.
No, no, I think High To, High Field, oh my God. High Point.
High Point.
Higginonies has actual equipment up there.
Right.
Hilltop, which is the Pulte development off Milford Road, that has that field as you go in that first driveway off to the left. And it's just a field, I don't even know if there's a sign, but I think that was always the intention. That, maybe that's been added for years since I've been down there, uh, but it's just a field.
Passive play area.
Yeah, and I think that, and that's, I, you know, I think that's what we kinda had in mind, at least I had in mind.
Yep, I think we kinda did too, because you've shared some recent articles about these apartment communities that have those passive areas, and they change, you know, whether you're playing cornhole, or you're...
Yeah.
Setting up a volleyball court for a little while, you know?
Just a flux, flux space is very important, yeah.
I think that's kinda, that's kinda what I had in mind, just some sort of an open space that...
Yeah.
Even if it's just a place to let your dog run and catch a frisbee or something.
Yeah.
So that area will be mowed all the time?
That's correct, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So the question of the board is, is it okay to leave it up to them to decide what they do there, or do you want to have any say in what they do there?
Oh, I, I think there should be some sort of language that says this thing exists. Well, no, that's what I started with, it's on the plan, is that sufficient, yeah, so, that should be sufficient.
Yeah.
What's the, um, elevation or the drop off? Because relatively...
Well, I mean, once you come down, there's a ten-foot grade change from this part of the trail to the bottom of the trail. So, but then, then this is all, you know, flat, because you, even the existing grade, when you walk through the, the tree line there, it drops off to this lower level, so, yeah, but this is all about the same elevation.
Steep, because we were building a, building an extensive berm on that, on, on, yeah, there you go, yeah, right in that area, so we actually filled that whole area up to give a big buffer for the, the neighborhood, yeah.
Can we describe it as a flat play area?
Flat, it's an area. I don't know, I don't know that.
A level play area.
I don't know, Dan, if, if you think we should have something in here, then, then let's add some language, I, I could go either way. If it's, if it's on the plan and that's sufficient.
I mean, even the, even the, the engineering plans show it as a, the grading shows it as flat area, so, what do we have to say that, to your point, that isn't already shown on the plans, it's...
Yeah, right now, that the, the graded, that the grading sheet shows as a box, says rec area, and it's flat. So, if that...
That's good, that's good, yeah.
If they go there and they, they put a shed there or something that's inconsistent, then you can enforce it?
Yep.
Otherwise, just let them do whatever they want?
It's shown on the plan.
Does the landscape plan say that it's mowed?
No, I doubt it. No.
I doubt it does, but I, I want it, I want an amenity like that, because it's hard to find, you know? We're trying to attract people in a more of a, an outdoorsy setting where they can utilize the trails and actually have open space rather than, you know, downtown somewhere.
I mean, if, if...
I don't know, Dan, I mean...
If we're revising the landscaping plan for a few things we talked about tonight, I, we could just add the word, you know, maintained record, you know?
Sure, that would be great. Yeah.
Can you say two and a half inch turf?
Do you want a blend of the silica sand and the pellets?
Irrigated, eighty percent Kentucky bluegrass. Low phosphorus, of course.
Exactly. All right, with that all being said, what happened to D7?
D7 is going away.
All right, so I want to make sure we're on the same page.
All right, so D9 has to do landscaping as well, um... So that, there was language in here that, that the landscape plan should be reviewed by the peer-reviewed landscape architects. The landscape plan has to have an adequate plan for ma, maintenance of the landscaping features, um, this is, I think, important for some projects, I mean, we, we had this in here for Prentice. Do you care about this level of regulation on this project?
I don't, I don't think it's as critical on this project.
I remember when the landscape architect had to come back to the ZBA to, to discuss and present the detailed landscaping plan, that's what I was thinking when I struck it from my draft, but you have more history than, than I do.
But I, I don't, I, in my mind, we don't need a peer landscape plan review other than whatever Jeff would do.
It's not, uh, I, I, I don't think it's as critical in this, but it's... It's not, uh, I I I don't think it's as critical in this, it's all about the project, first of all, that that peer review, remember, actually found some really good. There's a lot of good benefit came out of that, okay, um. But, I don't think it's as critical on this project, right, and Prentice Place had a whole different set of issues, I think it was much more important. Um, I I I don't, I don't think it's necessary in this project, I think that's kinda where we're headed. I mean, you still have to submit a landscaping plan, right, I mean, it's still gonna be a plan.
They they have one.
Oh, yeah, they have, yeah.
And so they're gonna submit a final one.
Yeah.
For your review, but it may not look that much different from what's here, so.
Okay.
Where can we limit the use of fertilizers, and you you would mention.
I knew, I knew, I knew you were gonna catch that one. I knew you were gonna catch that one. We could put it as a condition, I did say that in one of the meetings, that uh, that'd be on our uh, maintenance plan for the uh, the condo, but you can put it in the uh. Low, uh, what is it, low phosphorus uh fertilizers.
You thought I would catch that?
Yeah, I know you would.
You you gotta let him use fertilizer at the beginning, though. Cause you won't grow anything if you don't put anything down.
I'm thinking, yeah.
You know, start a fertilizer.
Yeah, it's just a, yeah, it's the low, we we can get around it, yeah.
Alright, so the language about the landscape plan that's coming out? No, or the review, the landscape, D nine, the landscape plan shall be reviewed.
Yep.
Okay, that's fine. So then D ten, um, third, before a CO for the third apartment building. Just out of curiosity, is that, is that a specific one, or is it the third out of the four that are being built? So I guess that's what the saying is.
This is a carryover from.
Yeah, it's a carryover.
Cause there were three buildings in that project, right?
Oh.
So I, I think I put fourth in my version to Dan, but I think for discussion sake, probably, Dan probably reversed it to third.
Yeah, I.
Yeah, no problem.
If you want it to be at the end, that's fine, usually it is at the end, so.
Yeah, I mean, I I think we wanna try and have that berm built as soon as possible, but that's part of the site grading and all that, so that's gonna go in right away.
Absol- absolutely, yeah.
Before the meeting.
Yeah, we did, yeah, I mean, realistically, we're gonna do the all the, we're gonna do all the berm, the stripping and the berm work all at once, and. Most likely, we're gonna go up towards the Peter's Way and do all those uh, the pines right along that as well at the same time. And hydroseed it all at once, and instant, instant buffer, so, that's almost like on phase one, for the most part.
I would think you'd want that for your benefit.
Yeah, no, it's a, it's a double, yeah, works for everybody.
And from a construction sequencing standpoint, it works out rather well, you normally have this big stockpile of material and you don't know what to do with it, well, you're gonna build a big berm.
Yeah, it works well in this case, then we don't have five thousand trucks on the road, you know, going all over the place, so it limits, you know, the 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 site's pretty much balanced for the most part. I'll have to import, you know, three quarter stone, things like that, but, um, at least a lot of the loom we can keep there. That's why, that's why we did the big berms, which, which helps.
So when do you want that to be built, timing wise, before construction of a building, or?
Well, I mean, you know, for the benefit of the Peter's Way neighbors, I'd like it to be done as soon as possible, I mean, you know. Does that mean before the CO of the first building? Uh, perhaps, I don't know, is that, is that a problem?
I don't think it is, I mean, if you tie it for the first, the CO of the first building.
CO or building?
Probably a CO.
I like the CO, cause the.
Yeah.
I'll have the majority done, it's just then it's the, you know, if I'm doing the pine, sorry, I'm doing the pine trees all at the same time, other than that stuff. Everything's all bulked in there, so.
But that means the site work's gonna be done before the berm. What, the purpose of the berm was to shield the neighbors from the site, from work on the site, so you okay them doing, clearing the site, doing the parking lot and all that?
I mean, it's also headlights and.
Yeah, I guess that's, I was, I was thinking the berm was more for once the site is operational, people are living in there, and the headlights, and that's what I was thinking.
And 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 again, first, first thing I'm gonna do is strip the loom, and the, almost the majority of the loom is going right to there first. So it's already gonna be a big berm, right, right from the get go.
Berm will be in place, really, the timing of the landscaping, top of the berm could be seasonal issue, so yeah, I think the.
Yeah, totally fine.
You live there, right?
Yeah.
I'll I'll let you speak, like, come on up.
Jeff Warham from One Peter's Way, so my concern about the berm being partially done, is it'll be a big pile of dirt, and when it rains. It's just gonna erode and end up in my backyard, so somehow, once the pile gets up there, the landscaping on top of it has to be finished to make sure that it's not gonna run off.
That that, yes, that's true, what we'll do is, well, we're gonna, once we put the loom on top of there, we're gonna hydroseed everything.
Okay.
Getting, then it veggie.
Cause I don't care about the trees.
Yeah, you gotta, I don't wanna run into your pool, believe me.
I don't want it running anywhere. And then the trees can happen after, after a later day, or, I'm gonna do it in.
Yeah, and 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 he doesn't want it either, and just.
Yeah.
You know, if if it does run into your yard, he's gotta clean it out, and we actually had that down at Fisherville, and and the town made that contract go into everyone's yard. Pull the hill back to where it belongs.
Yep.
You know, he doesn't want that, so I I think you're gonna be alright.
Yeah. Well, I can speak from our past track record anyways, so, we did quite well up at the Elmerak.
Okay.
Now, uh, D eleven with snow storage, um. This last sentence was a carryover, um, that should come out. Are we okay with snow storage? I I think, Steve, you did, you thought we were okay, we didn't need this in here, is that right?
Yeah, yep, exactly.
Um, I don't remember having a conversation with Jeff about this, but.
Where is the snow storage?
Yeah, just like, yeah, where is it?
Uh, it shows up on the.
On that map.
It's next to the garage.
So we have snow storage areas, uh, around the perimeter. Push between trees. Around here, uh, over here. Over here, and the, both ends, both sides of the dumpster, uh, there's a large area here between those two garages. And, uh, we have some, you know, just general areas around the, around the the road with the curbing. That's showing the layout plan there, identified as snow storage areas.
We just asked Jeff to confirm that it's okay with the snow storage?
Yeah.
Okay, then we have the donation of parcel A to the town, I I just stuck in here, or a nonprofit land trust. There's a, there's a Grafton Land Trust, right?
Yes.
So just in case the Concom doesn't want it. Is that okay with the board?
Yep. I mean, should, should we be able to approve who they're sending it to, so that, you know, they don't, Chad doesn't set up his own private wooden?
Hunting land trust.
Hunting lodge, yeah.
Why don't we just say town of Grafton or its designee?
There you go, yeah, town of Grafton or its designee, I like that.
Cause we're saying conservation, and I don't think we should say that.
Yeah, no, it's a good point.
Let the selectmen and conservation talk it over and, or their designee, which would be probably the land trust, but.
Well, you gotta, you gotta have a, some entity to be designating it, so do you want the select board to do that, or the Concom?
Yes. Select board handles all land.
They do, they'll be okay with it?
And I'm wondering if the town has to vote to take this?
They do.
Okay, I think, I figured so. I mean, at at a town meeting, any, any land transfer, a town, town vote has to, uh.
I don't think for the Conservation Commission, I think they can take land, but I don't think.
That I don't know.
Yeah.
That's my, that's my experience.
But that's okay, we can, so we'll just say conveyed to the town of Grafton, um.
Or it's designated.
Or it doesn't be nominated by the select board?
Yeah.
And I'll just put in parentheses, E.G. A nonprofit land trust. Okay. Uh, now, D thirteen deals with the trail, so Steve, I I kind of embellished this a little bit more.
Sure.
Um, because I think what you had proposed was to create, I, somewhere I read, you you were creating a four foot wide. Mulch path, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so so I added that to this.
Yeah, I took the wording out of the 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 agreement that came out of the select board process for the lip.
Okay, and by the way, I haven't scrubbed that, so I will do that before the next meeting to make sure there's nothing else in there that needs to get put in here.
You have, you have access to that?
Yeah, I have.
Yeah, it's in the application.
So, the way this is worded, basically, you have to create the trail, um, you submit. I I suggested what you do is you submit an informal plan to the Concom to sign off. On what this thing looks like and how you're gonna build it. Um, and then I just put in the last sentence, it's the, it's our intention that you're, you're just clearing a path. Leveling it, taking out the stumps and stuff, and then putting mulch down, it, we're not, just so we're, for your protection, that. We're not expecting you to pave it, or or make an ADA compliant, or whatever.
Okay.
So.
I don't.
Yeah, it works.
Yeah.
Is that good?
Yeah, nice.
Alright, um, and then D fourteen is the easement language, so there's, you'll be granting an easement to us. For public access on the walking trail, as well as for the three parking spaces that are in the parking lot.
Correct. And I, and I presume that that easement would be, would come after the construction of the trail, and it would just. It's not gonna be a meets and bounds easement, do you, how do you see that? It'd just be, be. Suppose it could be, but.
There would have to be a, an easement instrument, I don't think it needs to be meet, no, it doesn't have to be meets and bounds, it can be an easement instrument that references a plan.
Yeah.
So it could actually just be the plan that you filed the registered deeds for the project.
Yeah, yeah, okay, that the, if the.
But I should put a timing provision in there, I didn't put a timing.
Ten years down the road, the trail, you know, moves over five feet, the easement's still valid, because if it meets a bounds description, then all of a sudden it would be outside of the. That easement, but in this case, it would, well, it'd be, it would reference a plan, though.
About final as well.
Well, even if in ten years, someone decided that the easement should be over here because of where they want to pile sn- okay.
But that sort of stuff happens all the time.
I was playing lawyer, sorry.
Stay in your lane.
So I'll just say you're gonna, you're gonna grant this easement to us, um. Why don't we make it the same time as you convey the open space, which was before the first occupancy permit?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah. We had a provision in Prentice that lease terms have to be for at least six months, no nightly rentals. No Airbnbs.
I think that, I think that's a good idea in this day and age, uh, I assume applicants okay with that?
Yes.
So I, this is all, section E is all Prentice.
Yeah.
Um. You know, I guess this is where we could stick in some language about the garages, if you cared about that.
Your right knee seven, it looks like.
Yeah, probably, right, yeah. Yeah, I agree with that.
So what if somebody wanted to park their car, but also, or the, would the garage space be big enough for some storage? Besides a car? I mean, do you say they have to put a car in there?
It's probably enough for a bike, they're relative.
Not that big?
Yeah, they're relatively tough, you know, a bike, maybe some boxes and stuff.
Yeah, Christmas decorations.
Yeah, not, not tremendous. Yeah, yeah, it's not tremendous amount.
Yeah.
Are they, uh, eight foot wide garage doors, or or nines?
I believe they're eights.
Ooh.
Yeah.
Mirror killers. They're mirror killers.
Yeah.
Yeah. May, may, uh, if we're on that E seven, maybe that, uh, you know, the, the, we do the, uh. Encourage to do the low phosphorus fertilizer.
Oh, yeah.
Lawn care, maybe that's appropriate place for it as well.
So Dan, you're working on adding some language for the garages into this section?
Yeah.
Okay.
I I'll have to think about that language, but, um. I I put the phosphorus thing up in the open space, I think that's a better.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, E eight, the applicant will manage parking access.
Are you gonna have, are you gonna have any reserved spots? This was important for Prentice, cause we didn't want people parking across the street in the, the park.
I don't believe so, I think it's kind of a free for all.
Yeah, so the word reserved was, you know, kinda tricky to me, does reserve mean like designated?
Yeah, signed, the idea was assigned, every, every tenant has one assigned spot, and the intention was to try to avoid anyone parking across the street and.
Yeah.
In the, in the park, but I I think this can go, I, you know. I don't.
So it's a numbered parking lot?
No.
No, free for all.
Wait, here?
You said an assigned spot.
You talking about here, or you talking about Prentice?
Anyway, right.
Prentice, that's assigned?
There's supposed to be one assigned spot, every, every, every house, every apartment is supposed to have one assigned spot.
But we're not doing this on this one?
So I. I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's as necessary.
But I think with, with E eight, if we just leave it, but get rid of everything after that comment, with at least one reserved parking space per unit, get rid of that. But that they'll manage parking access, access to the project, parking through the lease with each tenant, and it's up to them to.
You may actually wanna mandate that the parking be unbundled. And that, that's a kind of a common thing now that I'm seeing, particularly in more urban environments, that prohibiting them from actually assigning parking spaces. Because if you assign parking spaces, then you have empty spaces that could be used from people coming home or visitors and.
Right.
It actually is, from a parking management perspective, it's actually better to unbundle them. Um.
Yeah, would prefer not to be numbered or assigned like that, especially with the vis- with the 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 circular motion of the buildings as well.
But I, I think it's just, what we would be saying is that you'll manage it through the lease with the tenant.
Yeah, I mean, they, they, they get a reserve.
A little different.
Yeah, what, right, the way it's worded now, is they could assign them, if you wanna prohibit them from assigning them, then you have to say that in the decision.
I don't, I mean, I, I don't think, uh, from my, in my mind, I don't think we need to be that specific. It's on them to manage it.
Yeah, I think, I think the management styles could vary over the, you know, the decade or two of, you know.
And I think we have enough parking that.
Yeah.
You know, you know, I don't think, I don't think it's gonna matter. You wanna sign some spots, sign it, you know, I, you know, and if you don't.
It's a, it's a bigger risk when you have fewer parking spaces.
Right.
A more likelihood of someone parking on the street, taking up space, taking up street spaces in the neighborhood.
Right, right, that's what we, exactly, we had a Prentice, so, yeah.
But they, they could through their lease, limit to one vehicle for certain units or something like that. I assume, you know.
But, but I don't know, we need to put it here, it's saying they have to do that.
No, no, I'm not saying, I'm just saying that they'll manage the parking access through the lease with each tenant, that's it. So it's up to them how they do that, and.
Yeah. I would imagine they have to do their plates, and maybe for that stranger that has a Corvette or something in the garage, you know, that, that's where they say, oh, sorry. You can't store your Corvette here, you gotta store it offside somewhere.
I mean, I'm, I'm okay with what Brian's proposed, um.
Yeah, I think we are too, that just leaves it open, that's supposed to say nothing, at least it's stated.
Did we decrease the width of the parking aisles? Or was it twenty-four feet, Steve?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
It is. Is there a minimum dimension of the parking spaces?
Nine by eighteen. So the eighteen-foot depth that you, is already in here, is fine.
Is it in, is it in the condition or?
Yeah, uh.
F three.
F three.
Well, that's if no vehicle longer than eighteen feet.
Yeah, what were you, were you saying was the parking stall dimension?
Does the board wanna have a parking stall dimension? Stalls must be a minimum of nine by eighteen, for example.
We showed on the plans, there's a detail that shows the parking stall dimensions. If that's worth anything.
Yeah, but.
Isn't it based on the space that they have available? So we've got two hundred and thirteen spaces, so it's gonna, isn't that gonna designate the size?
Yeah, but parking spaces are the kind of things where field changes could happen, and they might have some spaces that don't end up being eighteen feet, maybe they're sixteen. So if this is important, it's something that I would include in here, that if it's your expectation that every space be eighteen by nine, then I would put that in. If it's not that important. I mean, eighteen by nine's pretty big. I mean, a lot of projects have smaller spaces.
Yeah.
Compact, compact car spaces. Actually, do you have any EV stations?
We do, but those didn't change the size of the parking stall.
Are they, are they designated or?
No.
That's, that's the famous national grid.
Yeah, yeah. You'll see them on the eight-one plans.
Yeah.
Because that was a fire department comment. They said, put those charging stations as far away from the buildings as possible.
Yeah. True.
I guess those things kinda self,
They do.
Self-ignite or whatever.
Maybe the cars do.
The real problem is you can't put them out. That's the real problem.
Yeah, it's like a substation.
It's inside.
You don't show up and put water on that sucker.
No.
It burns more.
That's why they said, far away from the buildings as possible.
Yeah, we haven't proposed, but it could slightly change with national grid again, so.
But, you know, so getting to the, to the depth, I guess the concern becomes if, if things get narrow, you know, suddenly, you know, we end up with shorter parking spaces, and now that starts going cringe into the road, and, but again, I mean, if the plan is indicating, I don't know, Dan, I guess I kinda defer to you. I, I don't think I've had this conversation before. As far as the depth, you know, sometimes we talk about depth from parking spot to sidewalk to make sure the cars aren't blocking sidewalks. I don't think we have any of that here.
We used to go twenty-two feet.
Right, right, but that was so to make sure that the cars weren't parked on the sidewalk.
Oh, yeah, from the front of the driveway.
Yeah, back, but we don't have that situation here that I know of, so I, I don't know, I don't know.
We don't have any curves either, Steve, right? I mean, they're all pretty much linear nine by eighteen shown on the plan. I don't see even a spot.
A couple, but that's it.
Yeah, I mean, nine by eighteen is kinda what we always utilize and.
Then why don't we just put in there, you know, there'll be nine by eighteen, and if something changes, for whatever reason, you.
I'd rather not try to make them smaller. I wouldn't propose that, but I hate that, but.
But a lot of developers do.
Yeah, I mean, they screw around with the EVs, I think. They might go to switch it to eights or something.
Could be a Mini Cooper apartment community.
They could do two in one space.
That's what you want.
You better hope it's not a Chevy or a Ford pickup truck community.
So add some, add some language, just say nine by eighteen spot.
We're already saying we have two hundred and whatever, nine by eighteen spaces, right? I mean, do we say, just say that? Does that cover it?
Yeah, let's just say nine by eighteen spaces in this way. Then if there's a problem, we can talk about it.
Yeah, yeah.
How many electric charging stations are you proposing?
Four, five, six?
Wow.
I mean, it's provisions, you know, there's actual and then there's provisions. You know, you run conduit, so if you want out of it in the future, the conduit's already there to pull the wire and stuff.
Are you required now as a developer? Are they requiring that as energy, as part of your green?
Yeah, they're trying to, trying to push it. And I, I think, we know, people have electric cars. I mean, to be absolutely not to put electric, or the new thing that a lot of developers are doing, they're installing them, but also making provisions for them for the future as well, and that's what we'll be doing as well, so.
Yeah, the laws require provisions.
Right, gotcha.
Where did you add that, Dan? Is that F three?
How many handicap spaces do you have in the parking?
Eight. So F eight is a reference to the sidewalk. I actually get into the mitigation under section J one, but since we're talking about public safety in this section, they have to complete the Pleasant Street sidewalk and crosswalk by the issuance of the first occupancy permit. Uh, that, that's how I set it up.
Yeah, I think.
Steve, you had some similar language, but we get, we get, get more into this under section J one. Uh, section G affordability, so I added that table, the breakdown of the income levels, which is unique to this project. It's, in my view, a very good feature, something we never see. So we've got deeper affordability for several of these units.
Isn't this the tape? Oh, this is just D four.
Just D four.
So, Steve, I tweaked the language a little bit here from what you drafted, but I think it accomplishes the same thing. We're just saying that overall, twenty-five percent of the units have to be eighty percent or less, and then I say, as you've proposed, six of the affordable units should be rented at prices affordable to people earning fifty percent, and same thing with sixty percent.
Yeah.
And DHCD sets the rules for income eligibility and
Yeah. Yeah.
What the prices can be.
Dan, if I may interrupt. When are we gonna bring up, Bill, the, the question on public safety from the chief, his, and then that was dated eight thirty-one regarding the the below grade sidewalk, and then the response, Steve, I think that you had, basically, they're saying that you can't, you can't do that, and I'm looking at the September twenty-first, uh, September twentieth from Clay Williams, yeah. What's the status of that with, relative to the fire department?
But we're kind of in the middle of the conditions, right? Right?
Yep.
So we'll get to it, but.
Oh, okay.
Let's, let's stick with the conditions.
All right.
What, just so I know, what was that issue again? Is that a sidewalk issue?
All right, so, um, the chief has said, or, yeah, the chief has basically commented that the buildings with the walkouts,
Yep.
um, they have to get somebody out of there, right? Their chairs and whatnot are designed to go downstairs. They're not designed to come up. Okay, so they have somebody who needs, you know, an oversized person. You know, they, there's chairs and there's equipment that they can use to move people like that, but all that equipment is designed to go downstairs, right, from like a triple decker or whatever. They're not really designed to come up. And, uh, so that's, that's the comment. And, um, you know, so to address that, you know, one of the things that was, came up is can they build a sidewalk
To the back of the building.
From the back of the building to the front, and I think the response is that it would just take too much land to do it.
Well, and it won't be ADA compliant, so you're building a walk that meets a bunch of ADA compliant features except the slope. And if you were to build a switchback ramp that would, would be ADA compliant, it'd be five runs of handrails that could conceivably never be used. It'd be hideous. So, Clay and Chad met with the fire chief and fire captain and offered to donate these mechanical stair chairs that actually go up, and they were very intrigued. And they were just waiting for a reply that they actually, you know, can memorialize their interest. And, you know, and I think what's, what's up in the air is whether or not the chairs would be kept with the fire department, or they'd be kept in the, in the hallways of the building on site where they would most likely be used if they ever were to be used. So, I think they were intrigued. They just needed to.
Something new, apparently, that's come out, so.
Well, you know, as we were talking about this, and just for the benefit of the board, because this hadn't been discussed, but the other project I actually did meet, similar to what I did here, I met, you know, with the chief and the fire apartment and, and the applicant to go over the other project. But this actually came up, this, this issue. And I was wondering that exactly the same. I mean, I know from my HVAC days, we have, you know, hand trucks that are designed to go upstairs.
Yep.
Why couldn't you have a chair that does the exact same thing? Well, in fact, they do. I'm sure it's the exact same technology.
Yeah. Yeah.
And it folds up and collapses.
Motorized, it was a cool thing.
Something, something new, I guess.
One person could operate it. So should I put a placeholder in, in this section that we may impose a condition to?
Probably.
Yeah. That, that does, that chair does not accommodate a, a body on a stretcher being pushed, you know, that's, that's one of the concerns.
Yeah, that, that's absolutely right. And one of their concerns was, you know, if somebody's five, six hundred pounds living on the lower level, they can't lift them up, and I, I get it. It's, it's obviously a rare occasion. Uh, they probably most likely would be handicapped, and they would be on the first floor, you know, assigned on the first floor handicapped units here.
Do they, you have a response from fire? Because we don't.
No, I'm just reading his original.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
His original letter and your response suggesting the chairs, which doesn't address his issue of what do we do with the stretcher?
Yeah, he did, he did speak, he did speak of that.
Weather.
Yeah.
But after that email, there was a meeting. In the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was.
I'm just wanna make sure that his issues have been.
When this issue first arose, and then we met with them, and he was, he became made aware of the architecture of the buildings, and said, oh, these are open hallways front to back. He's like, oh, great, I can go down these stairs and get to the back. I said, yeah, absolutely. He goes, well, if there's ever a problem, and I can't go to the front, can you at least connect these two open hallways with a walkway so I can always go from here to here and then out? I said, yeah, that's great. So the most recent plans of, there we go, the eight-one plans, you'll see, you know, connects the backs of the, the open, uh, open hallways of the backs of those buildings to meet his initial request, and then he thought of something else, and we met again.
Yes. But. And some of the items also were related to Upton Street, so we, we killed kind of two birds with one stone, because Upton Street, actually, the walkout that occurs at, at Upton Street is actually a paved portion, so it doesn't have this walkout more towards the woods, so.
It's not an issue.
Not an issue at Upton Street.
So where that trail goes on the side of the building, how steep is that grade? Because that's the pinch point, right, is, is, is on the side of that building?
Yeah, yeah, when the, oh, my battery's dying. Like, it's a ten-foot grade change from front to back, and you just don't have the length.
Takes, ten foot over, how long? Is it ten percent grade or?
Yeah, it's probably, probably a ten percent grade.
I mean, that's not the end of the world for, like, if they can get out to the path, then they go up the path. Are they saying that's too steep?
Uh, I don't know if they said that at the meeting.
I mean, the thing is, if you create, we, we're not, we don't know this right now. If you create any type of path, we're not, we don't know if it has to meet ADA or not to get to the bottom level. Right now, we believe that these do pass the NFPA. They're trying to adhere to things. If we could make it, that would be great. I'm in another town doing exactly the same thing, and it's not an issue, but I understand his issue if there's, you know, he's six hundred pounds, and he's, and he's, and he broke his back, whatever. They gotta lift him up, and lifting up a guy that heavy with four guys is tough going up beside the stairs. Uh, is there another way to get out there? And I'm like, well, I could do, like, I know golf courses do, you know, a paved path going out there, or at least one, maybe, but it's not gonna be, it's not gonna meet the handicapped accessible.
I have to go.
And then I asked them, well, what if there's snow on the ground? He says, we'll shovel it.
Yeah, and that's unfeasible too.
Realistic is four firemen out there shoveling so they can make a path.
There's a possibility of a variance from the MassX, you know, accessibility board also on that. In other words, you're dealing with a safety issue that you can't really
Yeah.
design around.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's true.
Just don't design it and just pave it later.
What I was gonna say is, you know, you're working with the fire department. They're the ones who've expressed the concern. You're working on a solution with them. Let's, let's get to that point and see what they say.
Yeah, and I think they're coming back with a response. They're, they're busy. We just met them a couple of days ago, and we killed a lot of, a lot of good things actually on the list, and.
And like we've said, from day one, I mean, safety concerns have to be addressed. So if the fire department's saying there's a safety concern, then you gotta, you gotta work with them and address it. So let's see if they come back.
Yep.
They were fine until Paul Canoria suggested the switchback ramp.
Well, Steve, I was thinking the same thing, and I'm glad I didn't say it.
The handrail, that handrail would be more expensive than the, than the cost of the building. Okay, so I think we've gone through.
So you, I think you said you're gonna put a placeholder or something.
Yeah, okay. So I don't think there's anything else to talk about with affordability, section G, so anyways, we want to surety and covenants. I didn't scrub this, so I'll make sure that this is, that this language was from Prentice, so I'll make sure this works for the number of buildings here.
Yeah.
But Steve, you didn't have any issues with surety provisions?
No, yeah, we read them closely. Even all of us read them closely, so we didn't have any.
Okay. Stormwater, wastewater. I don't think you had any. There was one issue you had here.
Yeah, just the force, mention of a force mean.
I changed, I just, I changed your language, and I, I took your language, but, I'm sorry, I took your language and put it into this, this draft. So that's I six.
Can we talk about I two for a second? Because I think this covers a few other issues.
Yeah, true.
Uh, so before any site clearing or construction, the applicant should write fully engineered stormwater management plans and calculations prepared and stand by PE. Do we all feel that, like, when you're, when you're ready to vote on the comprehensive permit, that we'll already have that? I think that's our goal, and I think, I feel like we're ninety-nine percent there. Does that just need to be verified by somebody that that's actually where we are? Because I don't see us issuing any, any different plans than what I'm, what I'll issue you probably tomorrow or the next day, or whatever. Tomorrow's Friday, but.
Then it can happen simultaneously with this.
Okay, as long as, as I'm not gonna understand that's like what you're, you know, really what we have now is.
Yeah, I don't think there's a burden here. If you've already done it, then you just submit it and it's done.
Okay. Good. Thanks.
I mean, ultimately, I think it's, you know, Jeff has kind of reviewed the decision, the conditions, and if he agrees, that everything complies with state stormwater standards and.
Yeah. Because those of you who are around for the original, original Fisherville approval, yeah, there were conditions in there. It was dozens. Essentially redesign.
Yeah.
You know, and the original plans had a stormwater basin, you know, where you couldn't build a stormwater basin. It was an eighteen-foot cut and ledge. Because we were, you know, involved, not with the original, but we were involved with the redesign, so. We've evolved so far since, you know,
Yeah.
a decade of or more of forty B approval, so.
Okay, good.
I six has, have the concerns of the sewer department been addressed or there's study, did they?
So the sewer department's consultant called me around the middle of last week and asked me if we had a design of the pump station, and I said, no, we don't, because I wouldn't normally have a pump station designed at this stage of permitting. Uh, so he asked me if I could provide him what my calculated pump flow rate would be so that he can complete his review of the capacity of the sewer system. And I said, yeah, it'll take me, you know, take me.
And that's related to the study that the, uh,
Yeah.
sewer department, sewer system capacity evaluation.
So, yeah, over the phone, he told me there's no concerns. Paul Canoria told me there's no concerns, but until we have it all in writing, I don't think everyone's gonna be comfortable, you know, checking the box until we have it.
Is, is part of that study the downstream piping also?
Yeah, from the site all the way to the plant, because they're, they're.
From the site to the pump, is there?
The site to the sewer treatment plant.
Okay, so it's the whole.
Yeah, because it's all in their consultant's model. They're the town's consultant. They have been for a long time, I guess, CDM. So, it just goes in their model. They know what they're looking at.
Where's the pump station?
Pump station is, uh, the engineering plans, uh, show it behind the leasing building.
You just pump it out into the main and the street?
Yep, yeah, we kind of come up through here and then right into the existing. Yep, yeah, we kind of come up through here and then right into the existing drain manhole at the intersection of Pritzker Drive. And I thought, talking about it with Paul, I thought maybe he would want a manhole that receives the force main and then gravity into the existing. He said, nope, he'd rather not have more structures that are just prone to leaking. He'd rather just have one structure, which, by the way, is gonna have the force main for this project and the force main for Peter's Way and the in and out of the gravity on Pleasant Street. And he is very comfortable with that.
What's the calculation? Your bedrooms times one-ten?
For flow, yeah, but for the, the pumping rate, it's gonna be the size of the force main, the size of the pumps, elevation, friction loss.
And they're gonna study that all the way to the plant?
No, they just want, he wants to know how many, you know, cubic feet per second and, you know, of, of volume.
Because that must tie in at Baptist Bridge into the main line.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, he just wants to know the volume that I'll be putting in, you know, per second of flow into the system. He'll, he'll have that in a day or two.
So, um, it is ten o'clock, um, but I think we're probably close here, right?
Yeah, we are.
Okay, all right. If we thought it was gonna be another hour, we might want to go up some, okay, that's fine. Um, all right, where are we in this right now?
J. So we're gonna hear from the sewer department before the next meeting to confirm.
I, that's my expectation.
Uh, sidewalk, J-one, um, so this is just simply saying that they have to complete the sidewalk. They're, I set this up so they provide a detailed construction plan for the sidewalk and crosswalk to be reviewed by Mass, to be reviewed by DPW for conformity with unwaved town standards and Mast D O T road design standards. I don't remember where we left off with the crosswalk. Did we talk about doing a beacon or some kind of light?
Yep, it's all on those traffic mitigation plans.
Oh, the five sheets? I hadn't seen those.
Yeah, no problem. Yep. Yeah, and they're very, they're pretty explicit.
Do you anticipate a construction plan for the sidewalks and that crosswalk more than what you've already provided?
It's easy to do. We, yeah, it's easy to do because we have a lot of, all the information and just not make it look as pretty with all the satellite imagery and stuff, so.
Okay. So I, I would, I think this, I think we actually did this for, um, Prentice. We actually have, we had an off-site sidewalk that was reviewed by DPW. So I set this up the same way. Um, post-permit, you'll have that submission and then their approval. I set this up so that you're completing this by.
First occupancy. I thought I saw it somewhere.
Yep. Where is that?
The last.
Last sentence, okay.
Last sentence of J-one.
Okay, and then J-two would be the, the, uh, off-site intersection improvements. I just copy and pasted, uh, what was in, uh, Steve's email, which was consistent with what was in Tech's letter. Uh, I, I figured what I would do is run this by, uh, Tech. What's his name? Kevin?
Yep.
And make sure we've covered everything there.
But you, you, I think you want to tighten up some of that language, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
There was a donation. I don't, I know I'm missing a few things from the MOU, so I'll stick those in here as well.
Yeah, so the MOU may, may mention a whole sewer thing. We're not doing any of that.
Yeah. So, that's it.
Okay.
And then I'll take the waiver table that they gave us. I'll put that into our form, which is.
So, so these waivers are Prentice?
No, they're actually. No, these are the, these are.
Oh, the, oh, these are, no, these are, okay, these are the ones, all right.
Except, well, further down.
They need to be updated, okay.
I, I left Prentice's in later and I'll take those out, obviously, but that, that's how our table's set up. There's actually four columns with the sections and the, and the action, so.
Okay. All right.
So I think we just need one more meeting to finalize this language.
All right.
It was the hardest part of the night.
Yeah.
Next meeting.
Do we have anyone, uh, that, I don't see any raised hands. I assume those Q and A's are the same ones, so nobody is trying to say something. You guys want to say anything? So at this point, I think we need to schedule our next meeting. Um, I don't have the timeline off the top of my head, but I thought we were into November or something like that. It was gonna be fine.
October seventeenth.
October seventeenth.
October twelfth, um, is a Thursday? Um, and I believe that would be an ideal night to meet, but I think the, uh, planning board is also having a meeting um, that one of us should be at, one of the ZBA, because that's the, uh, proposed, uh, bylaw change for sheds.
On Thursday?
That's what they're talking about. I, I think what happened was Fiona didn't realize that she had to have a public hearing for it. So it's not on Monday's agenda.
Oh, okay.
So they're scheduling a special meeting just for that purpose. Now, you know, maybe we can talk to them about somehow combining the meetings. I mean, they need, they need all the public hearing. Maybe we just have it in the same room at six-thirty or seven or something like that, and then at seven-thirty, we meet on the twelfth, is that? How's everyone's availability on the twelfth?
I'm all right.
Yeah, I think I'm good.
Does that seem like a reasonable time, Dan? I mean, you need, you need a couple of weeks.
I don't have much time at all. I'm just, I'm just massaging language. I think we need the sewer guy to weigh in. You're gonna give us some revised plans with some modifications. Sounds like those are already in the works.
Well, yeah, they're all done. It's just a matter of, uh, putting in the plan that Jeff reviewed and approved of the infiltration chambers for the first two buildings and.
It's already done.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's what I mean.
Sheets are done, so.
Putting those into the set and.
Some landscaping changes.
Yeah, that's right. I'm waiting for the two landscaping sheet revision, so. By the middle of next week, you'll, you'll have the step plan set.
Planning board only have one? One thing for the hearing?
Honestly, I don't know, Peter. This all just transpired this, this afternoon when I noticed that we weren't on Monday's agenda. So I, I don't know, but Bob Berger seemed to indicate that they were looking at a, uh, October twelfth meeting. So. You know, if, if, if not, then we'll be in two separate rooms and, you know, maybe we just plan for this meeting at seven-thirty. I mean, let's, we'll continue with the seven. Maybe it turns out being seven-thirty that we planned for and then just walk out of the planning board meeting we have to.
What day are you talking about?
October twelfth. I, I think we just work, I mean, I mean, we, we have to meet. I mean, you know, so I think we just work with planning and.
But where would we meet if they're not done?
We'll figure it out.
No.
We'll figure it out. I'm, I mean, it's a legit question, but we'll have to.
I mean, there might be no camera, in other words.
Or maybe their meeting is somewhere where there's no camera and then we come in here.
They did, I mean, I know they have a Zoom option. The, the, last time I was in front of them recently, half of them were on Zoom.
Yeah, yeah. Hopefully, I, I think it's gonna be just that one item and hopefully we can just do it, we'll do it right here. Essentially do a joint meeting and.
It's controversial.
Why do you have to be there?
Well, we're sponsoring it.
Zoning board is?
Yeah.
Because it's on amendment to the zoning.
Well, it's, but it's more in our purview. We, we have to do, anytime somebody wants to put a shed and they don't want it in the middle or backyard, they need a variance. And, uh, so we're the ones constantly facing this problem.
And we'll get a public hearing, every zoning article change. Finance committee, finance committee, too.
Vassman, he's already approved it.
Oh, okay.
He did that last night. But, yeah.
All right, so it's not controversial. It should be routine.
Should be.
Yeah.
I don't think it's controversial. All right, um, so I guess I understand the motion to continue. Case number eight ninety-two to October twelfth at seven PM.
So move.
Second.
Uh, I guess we have to do a roll call vote, so. Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Omens?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
The chairman votes yes. So we'll see you guys next, uh, actually, we'll see you next Thursday, but for this, we'll see you.
Yeah.
Anything else? We're not doing that or anything like that. It's late. So I guess motion to adjourn?
Motion, so move.
Second.
Uh, roll call vote again. Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Omens?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Wait a minute, you're supposed to be doing this. Yes.